I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Will we enter the public hearing? Okay, Ron?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I think Mr. Burgulio with Davenport is here with us tonight. Glad to have Mitch, our financial advisor. Mitch, glad you traveled from Charlotte today and appreciate you being here with us. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, we'll just turn it on over to him.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me back this evening.
Make sure that mic, just touch it.
There you go. Is that better?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me back this evening. Tonight, here with several actions related to the funding of the high school project tonight. The first of which is a public hearing on the financing for the high school. And just thought it would be helpful to give... Don't touch it, sorry. All right. Thought it would be helpful to give you just a brief update on where we stand as well as a little bit of a history on where we've been in the planning for this project. Obviously, dates back several years, we've been through several iterations. But leading up to this financing late this spring, early this summer, we've been coordinating the staff on potential funding, financing options for the high school. And we have looked at, you know, direct bank loan financing options as well as the sale of municipal bonds in the public marketplace, like we funded the most recent project. And the public sale of limited obligation bonds was producing better interest rates for you all in the current market than the bank loan financing. And so we have pursued that path and gotten a lot in place to fund the project in that way. It will be funded as a limited obligation bond. And as a limited obligation bond, it will be secured by the high school itself. So the collateral or the security for these bonds will be a mortgage on the high school. It's a very typical, common way of financing school facilities in North Carolina. We've gone through the process, we've spoken with the rating agencies and working to get the bonds rated. We'll have those ratings back before the bond sale. The application has been submitted to the local government commission. And one of the things that we'll be looking for you all tonight is to ratify the submission of that application. We will be considered for approval by the LGC at their meeting on September 10th, just ahead of our scheduled bond sale on September 11th. September 11th is the date that the bonds will be offered and the interest rates will be set on those bonds. So that September 11th date is a key date where we will know the final interest rate on our bonds. In which case, after that time, it will be a matter of getting the documentation together for closing, which is scheduled on September 26th. That is when you will have the funds in hand deposited in the bank to be able to start funding expenditures from the bond proceeds. As I mentioned, those interest rates will be set on September 11th. Tonight, in addition to this public hearing, there are two resolutions that you will be considering. A findings resolution, which makes the findings that are required by the local government commission for their approval of the bonds, as well as the ratification of that application to the local government commission. And a final resolution, which approves the terms and conditions of sale of the bonds subject to certain parameters. Because we're not going to know the final interest rates until September 11th. You all have to approve the bonds prior to that. So we have certain parameters, which as long as the bonds are issued or priced within those parameters, the county can move forward. And because we don't know the rates, we tend to be conservative in setting these parameters. There is in your resolution, unless you choose to change it, it is a proposed not-to-exceed amount, borrowing par amount of the bonds of 76.3 million and a not-to-exceed interest rate of five and a half percent. What I'll tell you is that is below, or excuse me, the current market is well below that. We're well within those parameters right now. Don't anticipate getting to those parameters. But we do try to put some cushion in there to account for any potential market movement that may occur. We're only going to issue the amount of bonds that we need to issue to fund your project, which is just under $135 million for the high school. You've got the $62 million grant. So we are looking to fund project cost around $72.8 million plus the cost of the financing. That is how we will determine the amount of bonds we need to borrow. In the current market, and this is, y'all are going to look at me like I'm crazy. In the current market, to fund that 72.8 million, the estimated borrowing amount, the amount of bonds, is currently 66.8 million dollars to fund the 72.8 million. And y'all may recall, in the last public sale, they're part of setting those interest rates, investors may like to have or offer a premium pricing for your bonds, meaning they will pay you more than 100 cents on the dollar for your bonds when they purchase them. In exchange for that, they may receive a higher interest rate on the bonds. It's moving from one hand to the other. Either pay less in principal and more in interest, or more in principal, less in interest. It doesn't impact what your total payments are on the bonds. So I know that's a little confusing concept. But where we stand today, 66.8 million estimated bond issuance amount. The current interest rate is right at a 3.6 percent average interest rate on those bonds. All in, principal plus interest. We're borrowing the money over a 20-year period of time. So over the life of that 20 years, principal plus interest, the total payback is estimated right at $100 million. So 66.8 million principal amount, total repayment of about $100 million. Just for a little perspective, when we were together in May, going through the capital funding plan at that point in time, we had two scenarios for you. We ran a current market interest rates at the time back in May. That average interest rate was around a 3.75 percent. And the total principal plus interest payback was 106.5 million. So rates have improved a little bit as of today compared to where we were in May. But the key rates that we've been working with and analyzing over the years is a planning interest rate of a 5 percent. And that is what we have used throughout the modeling process for the CIP. That had a total principal and interest payback of $117 million. So right now, knock on wood, current market rates were below, well below that planning rate. Also below where we were estimating the current markets back in May. So we've got less than a month, but we still got some time for interest rates to move around on us. We're going to keep an eye on it. And that's why we have this contingency within the not-to-exceed amount, since your approval is today and we're not locking in the interest rates until September. So that's key things for you to be aware of this evening. Two resolutions you're going to be looking to adopt after holding the public hearing this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is this the time we move into the public comment regarding? I didn't pick up my paper up there, did you?
Sheriff, did you get a sign and sheet?
Yeah.
Mitch has presented the funding options. I think now it would be in order to open the public hearing.
And I believe in the public hearing, if you choose to speak, it's got three minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At this time, you will just need to open the public hearing and then we will move in directly into the public comment. Each speaker during the public comment will have three minutes to address the board. And this will be concerning the funding for the Franklin High School project.
Tammy, where's your wagon at? A pen is quit. Thank you. This might quit too, same color as this guy. All right, Mr. Richard Lightner. You're the man.
Good morning, board. I wanted to plan on speaking at this one, but since nobody signed up, I did first. One thing about this high school project. Way back when Kevin Corbin was chairman of the school board, we asked committee, looked at building the high school. At that time, it was $27 million. Now, I've been involved with real estate through this county for many, many years. And now we're at the 130 million, give a few dollars, whatever. Our tax base is very strong, has been strong. I was here 35 years and we were always talked about being so strong. It's time to build a school for our children, our grandchildren, or the people that's moving in here with children that bring them jobs. They need to be educated at a level that other schools are being done. If I'm correct in thinking, our school's probably the oldest school west of Asheville, South Asheville High, which is a historic building. So we've got this money from the state, very fortunate. We improve our sales tax in the future. The citizens will go home with the same tax bill they started with before the school. But our children will leave the high school prepared for whatever jobs that there will be out there. We have great teachers, we have great administrators, we have a great county. Now let's buckle down and get to school.
Thank you, Mr. Lightner. I don't have anyone else on this sheet. Time to close it up then, right?
Yes, sir.
I've got a motion to close the public hearing. Who did that?
I made the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, Mr. Antoine. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your hand.
Make the motion.
Say, John make the motion. We're in the cussing the discussion, right? All right, let's see where we're going. What about the number five, Mr. Rowland?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we will begin discussing possible action of funding for the Franklin High School project. I think first, up for the consideration of this board will be the preliminary resolution in support of the county financing for the new Franklin High School. I think that resolution, Mr. Chairman, at this time is up for consideration by this board. And it is in your agenda.
Does the board need to be any more clarification or anything from the county manager regarding this?
We will cut right. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution providing final approval of terms and documents for financing the construction of a new Franklin High School.
Motion second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Antoine. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, exactly how much are we financing? I heard the numbers. But has there been a final from the subcontractors for this project? I know we talked about 137 million. But it's my understanding that we didn't get enough bids on some of the projects. So nothing's finalized yet. And it's concerning that we would move forward without final cost of this project. I'm not sure exactly how many of the subcontractors didn't see enough bids. But I have spoken with some of the contractors that's bid this project. And they have stated that, and I'm just telling you what they told me, was this is a Taj Mahal. It's the best of the best in this facility. And so whether it is or it isn't, but it is concerning that we don't have final numbers. And just to clear this, and I've stated it before. When I first came on this board, I was having meetings with the architect team on phase one, which was a sports complex. At that time, it was $15 million. And Commissioner Higdon, Chairman Higdon at the time, we were meeting out there trying to catch up. And we saw some things that we could cut costs. And so the last I remember, we were down to about $9 million on this sports facility. And now we're back up. And it is very concerning that we will just go forward with approving financing for something we don't know what we're financing. We've talked about 137 million. When that cost came out, it was stated that the school was 80 percent complete in the design phase. So how do you get a total cost with something that's not finalized? And so I just have reservations for approving anything that we don't have any idea what the final cost is.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think we have our contractor here with us tonight. I think they can speak to some of Mr. Cheryl's questions.
Yes, sir. So I'm with Carroll Daniel Construction, CM. So when we spoke back in May, we provided a budget based off the 80 percent documents, with construction costs at 126 million. And then the analysis of soft costs for the furniture and the rest of the things that the school system would need to provide would be that. That got to the 137 million. So we took bids. We did have a few packages that we had to rebid according to North Carolina state law. We did get bids for all the packages. Everything has been finalized. We've submitted a complete GMP at this point. That number came in just under 123 million for the construction cost, which is under budget, which put the overall complete package under $135 million. So the construction cost and the overall are complete, that is a finalized GMP, and it is within the budget.
Okay. So what you're saying is, Macon County Franklin High School is going to be 100 percent complete? No more, because we were approached about Phillips Street and Waller Street and the entrance to that. You know, that all needs to be changed. It's in there.
Yes, sir. There, at this point, that development is in its status. But we have included an allowance to cover that work because we understand that that does need to be captured. Yes, that's part of this.
Thank you. This time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read a statement that I prepared. As I have stated numerous times before, I agree that the current campus is not ADA compliant and has some pretty serious repairs and renovations to the current facilities. Chairman Shields convinced me that the current campus is not adequate for the current curriculum, so therefore, a new facility is warranted. I say that to say this. My vote will be no on the current plans of the current site and financing for this purpose. I feel that it is a waste of several buildings that can be repurposed for other government facilities. I question if there is adequate parking. I feel the current site will be landlocked and no way to expand for the future needs and actually will not provide the current needs of our high school students and athletes. I feel we are placing our taxpayers at risk of future tax increases because of all the needs in the other areas of this county. If not, there will definitely be neglect in the needs of the county moving forward. I would like to thank all of you that have spent a lot of time and energy working on this project. I hope and pray that I'm wrong and you're right. So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, that's where my apologies.
Thank you, sir.
One, the cost that includes everything, the demolition, the final product.
Yes, sir.
Would, I'm not being rude or crude, would you stand up and shake your head? What was your question again? Okay, thank you. My sight's bad.
I share some John's concerns. I have a real hard time tearing down perfectly good buildings that are worth millions of dollars. And doing it on the same site. I think congestion is an issue now. Wait till the construction exists for two years. It's going to be a congested area.
Thank you, Mr. Higdon. Good luck over the motion. Is that the preliminary resolution?
Yes, sir. There's a motion. Commissioner Young made the motion to approve the preliminary resolution in support of the county financing for the new Franklin High School.
And Mr. Antoine seconded it?
Yes, sir.
He said final. He said final resolution.
There's two motions, yeah.
Yeah, I think there needs to be two.
Two motions, two actions.
So we've got a preliminary motion.
Yes, first.
Then we've got to come back and do it for the final.
Yes, sir.
So need Mr. Young to digest and amend your motion if you're willing to the preliminary first and then proceed with the final.
Please amend my motion to the preliminary resolution.
Mr. Higdon, we moved to the preliminary resolution. Any more discussion?
Part.
We moved it to the, Mr. Young changed it to the preliminary resolution. It's just, I don't know, there's two motions here. One will be the final approval, one's preliminary. We've got a motion now for the approval of the preliminary resolution.
That's the motion on the floor.
Yes. Any further discussion? If not, all vote, am I doing something?
Did they any second back with us?
Yes. Yes, he did. Let's go back. All in agreement of the preliminary resolution and motion that was made, raise your right hand. All opposed? All opposed? I believe we go to the final approval, right?
Yes, sir. So at this time, it would be in order to entertain a resolution providing final approval of terms and documents for financing construction of a new Franklin High School.
So we make that into a motion?
Yes, sir.
And I'll do that. I need a second.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, for vote on the resolution providing approval of terms and documents for the financing and construction of a new Franklin High School. Raise your right hand. All opposed, same thing. Thank you all very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate people's involvement and what you've meant to this project. It's been a challenge, but that's what makes it good. Now we'll move to the... You got something else?
I'm just next, yes, sir.
Miss Young, seven. All right. Discussion approval of financial policy guidelines. Excuse me, Mitch, go ahead.
Sorry, Chairman, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I wasn't sure I was supposed to keep rolling or not. So we've talked about over the last several years as part of the development of the capital funding plan and particularly this high school project, putting in place a series of financial policy guidelines, certainly specific to debt and the debt issuance that you're... certainly specific to debt and the debt issuance that you're moving forward with, with the high school, but also more generally, financial policies for the county as a whole to provide some guidelines to continue to maintain a strong financial position. There is a draft of the financial policy guidelines in your packet this evening. And this is something that we've worked on developing with staff. And there are a couple of key categories. There are capital improvement budget policies, so that capital improvement plan we've been working on over the years, adding some policies surrounding that. Debt policies, reserve fund balance policies, some budget development policies, and some cash and investment policies. Largely, these are memorializing the things that you all are already doing. So, for example, page two outlines the capital improvement budget policies. This memorializes the process that you all have been going through on an annual basis to identify a ten-year capital improvement plan needs over the next ten years with a focus on the first five years and a developed funding plan for the first five years, developing forward-looking projections, addressing both new capital costs as well as maintenance and vehicle and equipment replacements. So, memorializing the things that you all have been doing on page two. Page three is establishing some debt-related policies, some tax-supported debt-related policies for things like the limited obligation bonds for the high school. And down at the bottom of the page, lines six, seven, or eight, these are really the limitations or policies that you're establishing. And these are consistent with the levels that we've been reviewing and discussing over the last several years. The first is net debt as a percentage of your tax base. Assessed value should not exceed two percent. The second is debt service to expenditures. Your annual principal plus interest payment should not exceed fifteen percent. And the ten-year payout ratio, this is always the confusing one. The amount of principal you're repaying over the first ten years should be at least fifty percent. So, if you issue ten million dollars over twenty years, you should pay back five million dollars over the first ten years. These are the policy levels that we're, we have proposed in talking with staff as part of these draft policies. Item eight, I also think is important. It does provide the ability for you all as a board or future boards to make an exception to this policy. If there is a need, an extreme need that you need to borrow it for, that might put you out of compliance for a certain period of time. There is the ability for the board to make an exception to it, state the length of time that that exception is anticipated to be needed, and at that point, work on a plan to getting back into compliance as quickly as possible. That's on page three. We pulled in the page right after page three. It's confusing because it says page six on the bottom. But it's page six from our last updated capital funding plan. This just shows you the projections of where we were projecting to be after the issuance of the high school bonds. And so, you can kind of see where you end up. For the payout ratio, you would still stay above fifty percent as a minimum and improve from there. Debt to assessed value would, you know, stay under point seven-five percent and decline from there. Debt service to expenditures gets up around twelve and a half, thirteen percent and declines from there. So, even after the issuance of the high school, you would still have additional debt capacity within these policies if there was a need to do that. Nothing is anticipated. There's no other bond issues planned as part of the current five-year plan, but there is capacity under these policies if you needed to do so. So, that's the debt-related policies. Kind of flip the page back to page four. This outlines the reserve and budget development policies. And I'm going to go backwards. The budget development policies at the bottom, again, kind of memorialize the things you do as part of the budget process. The reserve policies are memorializing the things that you all have done informally over the years and establish minimum amounts of fund balance to maintain. And this is consistent with what we've talked about as part of the funding plan. So, it establishes a minimum unassigned fund balance of twenty-five percent with a target of thirty percent. So, you know, you shall not go below twenty-five percent, but you're going to target to maintain a slightly higher amount at thirty percent. If you fall below the thirty, you're still in compliance with the policy, but just a little bit below that target, and you would work to get back up to that. That's number one. Number two is establishing, outlining what you can do with that fund balance over thirty percent. So, if you are over your thirty percent policy target, that excess fund balance could be used to be transferred to the debt service or capital reserve fund to fund the capital improvement plan or other capital projects or set aside in the reserve fund for future capital projects. And this is in line with what we've discussed. Fund balance is a one-time revenue source. And so, the idea is we will use that one-time revenue to fund one-time expenses as part of the capital funding plan. Best practice is you don't want to use fund balance to, you know, fund expanded operations or salaries or something that is a recurring expense because once you spend that fund balance, it's gone, but that expense is still there and it's still recurring into the future. So, try, this is aligning one-time revenues with one-time expenses as part of this policy. And then, like the debt policy, you know, we do acknowledge that, you know, in the case of a, you know, declared emergency or an opportunity, you could be in a position where you need to pull down your fund balance below the minimum twenty-five percent. You as a board can make that exception. But in doing so, there should be a plan that is adopted to restore the fund balance within a thirty-six-month period of time to policy limits. So, we're establishing policies, guidelines, minimums, but acknowledging that in certain unforeseen circumstances, you still do have some flexibility if you need that. You all control that as a board. And then, finally, well, let me show you this. The next page, again, jumping page numbers, page two is from our last presentation. This shows you where you are currently on your fund balance, excess of seventy percent. There is a plan as part of the capital funding plan that we discussed this year to transfer twenty million dollars from that fund balance to the capital funding plan. And even transferring that amount, you will still, that will leave you with, as of fiscal year twenty-three, about six point three million dollars of remaining fund balance in excess of that thirty percent policy. So, as part of the capital funding plan, would be enacting a portion of this policy to transfer excess to the capital reserve fund, but not all of it, kind of doing it in tranches as you get used to this new policy being in place. So, still have some flexibility there within the fund balance. You could be in excess of the policy even after that twenty million dollar transfer. Last piece of these policies is on page five, the cash and investment policy. This is essentially stating that you will follow state statutes to invest your funds and establishing some guidelines for further protection with the investment of funds. To date, you have not, you have largely invested in money market funds that are earning very good interest rates right now, so you don't have any longer-term security investments at this point in time. But this just puts in place, consistent with state statutes, some guidelines to work around if you ever do look at additional investments beyond the money market funds like the Capital Management Trust. This is, you know, something I know that we've talked about over the years that you all asked us to come back with after the last capital funding plan discussion. And in talking with staff, felt it was, made sense to do that in conjunction with moving forward with the high school project, establishing particularly these debt policies.
Thank you, Mitch. And I think it's good, you know, administration and finance, we have talked about this for some time. We work hand-in-hand with our financial advisors. Again, they're professionals and, you know, they do this. This is what they do. You know, when it comes to finances and Macon County's financial position, you know, we're about to be able to perform one hundred and forty million dollars worth of capital projects, and we're still going to have thirty-six, or thirty-six percent of remaining in the fund balance. That didn't happen by accident, and that is a testament to the financial stewardship of this board and this organization and the boards that have preceded you. I think another thing this does is, you know, these boards, these boards change. Faces change. But as long as, during the budget process, and as long as when we're considering financial, significant financial expenditures and capital expenditures, no matter who's here, when these policies are adopted on this board, these board members can go back to these policies and say, hey, these are the playbook. This is the playbook, you know, and does this capital expenditure that we're considering, does it fit within our financial policies? And as long as we have these to guide us, we can continue and remain the financially solid organization that's allowing us to do what we're able to do today and going to continue to allow us to do what we're going to be able to do in the future. And that's continue, to continue to improve these schools, continue to make capital improvements, have money in the bank, and have the lowest tax rate in state. And all that sounds good to me, don't you, Mitch?
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mitch.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, we've got to put that in a motion, in a book of words. How can we condense this motion?
Motion to approve these policies as presented on August thirteenth.
August, okay. What about the approval of the financial policy guidelines?
That's this, yes, sir.
All right. Through Davenport Public Finance? Do I need to put your name in there too?
No, sir, you don't. I think you could just say motion to approve these financial policy guidelines as presented on August thirteenth. I think that'll probably cover it.
Okay, that'll, you heard me. That's a motion I make. Or second?
Second.
Second, about Mr. Antoine. Did you get all that in there? What the wording of that motion was? You got it? All right. I see we've got a motion and second. Any more, any discussion? All in favor? Show a hand, vote. Thank you very much. Thank you, board.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mitch.
I guess I can say that piece of the public hearing is over. We're going to be moving into a public comment period. You're welcome to state. But if you're needing to leave, like Carol Daniels, I'll see them move right there. You go ahead and move on out, and we'll hold our breath till you get out of there. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you, Mitch. Where are you going, Drayson?
I'm here.
Okay. Don't you run that all the way.
Chairman Shields, just before the public comment period, I would just like to remind the public that the four jurors are welcome to speak on any topic except for personal attacks and personnel issues. So, those are the two topics that are off, that are off-topic, that would not be permitted.
And let me hit you with a little bit of a guideline here. Some of you maybe knew, we'll have a total of forty-five minutes for this public comment. We will have, each individual person will have a five-minute max. And if you multiply that out, you've got about nine. But if you go less than five, we'll work with you. The, I need the list. If I, Mr. Nelson, somebody's name, I'll give the policy now. That's it. Is it Kenny? I shouldn't know this. Kenny Elkins? Where's Kenny at? Kenny, come on down here where the mic is. And Kenny, if you watch that little clock up there, if you get over five minutes, you go to jail for thirty days.
In there, done that.
I understand. And no, I'll cut everything off. Kenny, go ahead and tell us who you are.
My name's Ken Elkins. I live at one forty-two South Oak Ridge Road. I also own one sixty South Oak Ridge Road. I've contacted every county office that I know of trying to get a problem solved. And everybody passes the buck. I says, call somebody else, and I called them, and they say, call somebody else. Well, finally, I called you, Mr. Shields.
Yes, sir.
And you and I have had five different conversations. You mentioned that I should come here and mention, like, what's going on. And at the same time, you mentioned even though I'm going to be here, probably nothing's going to get done about it. But I heard you mention it anyways. I have neighbors that have animals, cows, chickens, pigs, goats, dogs, cats, birds, whatever. And they just let them run loose. They come on my property. They crap on everything I have. They pee on everything I have. They wake me up in the middle of the night, roosters underneath my lip, or bedroom windows. I've called animal control. I've called deputy sheriffs. I've called the magistrate. I went to the magistrate last week and talked to him myself. I've called everybody that I know. And I'm getting to the point where I'm done with it. If somebody doesn't do their job, then I'm going to do my job. And my job is to protect my property. I spend money on my property. I buy everything that is on my property. I pay my taxes. I expect people that are elected to their jobs and that are paid from my taxes and everyone else in this room's taxes to do their damn job. That's all I ask. I ask that somebody comes out and does something about it. We need a law somewhere in the county that states if you own an animal, you have to protect that animal. You have to take care of that animal. There's laws on the books about protecting the animals, but there's no laws about protecting our property from those animals. I've worked it up. I've tried, I've done everything I can. And this is my last resort. Like I say, if someone doesn't come and take care of it, I'm going to take care of it myself. And they, the people that own the animals, we're not like the results. And you guys may not like the results, but I will get my results. And that's, that's it. And I'm tired. I mean, I ask for nothing else than what are my rights? I ask for no privileges. I, I'm a veteran of the United States Army. I don't ask for a privilege because of that. I'm handicapped. I don't ask for a privilege because of that. I ask for my rights. The right to protect my property. My family and anything that I own. But if the people were not going to do their jobs, then I, again, I got to take it on my own to do it. I shouldn't have to. I've been told to go to the magistrate. I've been told to go to civil court. I've been told all these different things. And nobody wants to take responsibility. So, again, no one takes responsibility, I will. That's just the bottom line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elkins. Kenneth McCaskill? You know the rules.
I've been to several meetings. I know the rules. I'm Kenneth McCaskill. I represent the Macon County Farm Bureau Board Director. I'm here tonight, I think, and I'm... I'm here tonight, I think, on item ten down there, we're gonna do a discussion of the soil erosion and sedimentation ordinance. I don't believe that this needs to be changed. I understand a high faker is what doesn't require permit. When you exceed that, you have to get permits and go through the regulation. We are not the coastal plain, we're not the Piedmont, we're in the mountains. Our soils are fragile, ground is steep, and there were a lot of good minds that worked many years ago on developing these ordinances to protect not only our soils, but also our neighbors that are downstream. Let's use a little common sense and realize that we can leave this ordinance alone. It's been working, it ain't cruel, it don't need to be fixed. I know some folks can make some money, or they can do a little more if they don't have to pay the permits. I know the county says they don't have the personnel to do the inspections and permits, and what they need to do. But maybe we need to get those people on board, we need to enforce what we've got. We need to do a good job of it, and we need to look after our future. Let's don't let everything boil down to a few people making a little money because they can continue on and do damage to our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth. Jessica, you're gonna have to help me, is it M-R-U-G-A-L-A?
I wanna see what you say, give it a whirl.
Oh, wow, Mister, let me see. Galla?
McGala, yes. My, my favorite mispronunciation is Mister Oogala.
Oh, no, I didn't do that, 'cause I, I see that you're a female, so I didn't do the mistake.
Alrighty, well, good evening, thank you all for having me. My name is Jessica McGala, I'm a seven-year resident of Jackson County at two ninety-six Savannah Drive in Sylva. My regional work has involved Macon County for the past four years, and I'm the local food coordinator for the Empowering Mountain Food Systems Project. This is an initiative of the Center for Environmental Farming Systems in collaboration with Cooperative Extension and NC State University. I received my master's in public health with a leadership concentration through UNC Gillings in the region at Mayhak. And what all of that jargon means is, my expertise and my career is bridging the gap between local food and public health. So, I'm here tonight as an elected leadership team member for the Healthy People, Healthy Carolinians, Mountain Wise Partnership for Health Coalition. More jargony words. But Mountain Wise is a Region One Health Department collaborative. We're fiscally agented by the Region One District Director's Office, which of course is the Macon County Health Department under the leadership of Kathy McGaha, who is joining us this evening. Thank you Kathy for being here. So our HPHC Coalition is composed of over a hundred and fifty people across the region. So we're public health professionals, researchers, food pantry directors, farmers, educators, faith leaders, and more, all who envision a reality where residents of western North Carolina have access to healthy eating and active living opportunities. I'm proud that our coalition has been noted by the Duke Endowment, our funders, as the model coalition when compared to the other twenty-nine coalitions in North and South Carolina. We are a model because of our deep collaboration and our success in securing over half a million dollars in funding. This success is due to the leadership of our coalition director, Nicole Heimbach, who, and we have come to you as elected leaders, to speak to other, more governmentally official elected leaders, to talk about this important work and ask you to help some problems committed by county government representatives. So this evening, you will hear from me, of course, but we'll be talking to you about Nicole's effectiveness as the director from fellow leadership coalition members and program participants. So our speakers will discuss the impact of our work as a community and why this work is so vital to Macon residents. And, and of course, why we're concerned about the future of our programming due to reckless decisions made by the Region One Health Departments led by Kathy McGaha of Macon County.
And then Mitch McGala, again, the, the rules are that you can't, you can't talk about personnel issues.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, my, and, and again, what I do wanna speak about is concern about, concern about secrecy and why, why someone was fired, especially someone collect, elected as someone part of a coalition.
And that's where we get into the general statutes that don't allow us to, to discuss personnel issues, so, so we can't elaborate on, so these are, these are why these topics are, are off-topic in, in regard to public comment.
Okay, I did request to be on the agenda, but was advised to come here since it was a personnel issue.
You know, well, personnel issues can't be discussed during public comments, we likewise wouldn't put personnel issues on the agenda.
Okay, well then what I can speak to is Kathy's decision to return two hundred thousand dollars that was secured for funding for our region. And again, this is collaborative work. And in a pattern of uncollaborative decision-making, the Macon Health Department did decide to return this two hundred thousand dollars in awarded Dogwood Health Trust funds that Nicole and the coalition has secured. A big concern that I do need to note is Nicole was fired without any input from our coalition.
Again, that's off-topic.
Okay, well, well, also, well, fine. So returning this grant has impacted the salary to funding for as many as eleven people across six regions. This includes the Macon Food Council and the Macon Farmers Market, and also Mountain Wise. Additionally, this funding was earmarked, earmarked to propel our produce prescription program into a year-round program, and this impacts over thirty local farmers, their businesses, as well as hungry WIC families who receive these local food boxes. Returning this money is causing harm to not just Macon residents who are most vulnerable, but also the region. And under this leadership and these decisions that we were not pretty to, or a part of as a community, we are left in the dark, not knowing what is going on in your government office. So what we ask for is an investigation and some clarity about what is happening.
Okay, Miss McGala.
That time is up. I do have some packets with letters of support and some information about our programings.
Thank you Jessica.
Just for clarification, the, the health department is a separate board, so this board actually doesn't have any, have any jurisdiction over the health department or the decisions by the health department.
Yes, yes.
So, I don't know, I, I'm just letting you know, I don't think you're, if you wanted to address the board that would oversee that, it would not be this one.
Okay, I, I was advised by a government official regionally to address you guys. So, I care what you, what you know in your power as well, so I wanted to be here today.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Doctor Patrick Baron?
Thank you very much, I'll be speaking on a similar topic, I will try to stay within the guardrails.
Just watch the clock.
Yes, watch the clock. My background is, again, in sort of public health meets food systems. I've been working in western North Carolina as a epidemiologist, as an elected member of the Healthy People, Healthy Carolinas Leadership Team, as an employee under contract working to support a variety of public health issues in Macon County and the region at large, working in private, nonprofit, public sectors, you name it. I've been a piece of it in the last six or seven years. I'll speak to the work that was accomplished under the Healthy People, Healthy Carolinas partnership under the last year or so, notably, and within that packet you'll see some of the results of this project. We conducted a community food security assessment that really looked in-depth at what were the post-pandemic shifts to Macon County residents' food security within the last two years. And found some really shocking results, including that the number of people utilizing Macon County food pantries has roughly doubled in twenty-four months, that that's placed an immense strain on that safety net, that those residents most affected are senior citizens living on fixed incomes, people without a lot of economic wherewithal, mobility to improve their economic capacity to purchase enough food. And it's not just people who are nutritionally not having access to what they need for their health, it certainly is that. But it looks as though rates of children's hunger and hunger in general have also doubled alongside the number of people yet who are using Macon County food pantries. Right here in Franklin, CareNet serves twelve thousand people a year. There are not that many people in Macon County, you know, twelve thousand of them not be a very significant portion. That was not the case two years ago. The same goes for every other pantry that is operating within the footprint of this county. I would guess that it represents over forty percent of our residents that have used a food pantry at some point in the last eighteen years. That's twice as many as would've been the same two years ago. A lot of that work was uncovered through Nicole Heimbach's leadership. That's, this is not things we would know about. This has led to a lot of, as Jessica mentioned, attracting a lot of new funding, including Dogwood Health Trust committing two hundred, more than two hundred thousand dollars to address a lot of these issues, fund programming, and where the legs were really cut out from under the momentum that was achieved under that partnership, under Nicole's leadership. And where personnel changes and the sudden disappearance of committed funds are really interrupting key programs that are supporting the fundamental security and well-being of Macon County residents. Some of the most vulnerable, some of the least able to take care of their own needs. This is like the bare bones of the safety net and an issue that is emerging as more and more serious for the constituents of this county. And this has really been an action that has cut the legs out from under some really key personnel, some really key programs affecting some of the most vulnerable people. So, it also just does not make sense. Logistically, from a management perspective, this is not how to run an effective department, how to have effective oversight of programming, and it really does diminish capacity, it may even fully derail the capacity for the partnerships that, you know, a hundred and thirty people are a part of this coalition. That's not, you know, it does not happen overnight, it doesn't happen without a lot of trust-building, relationship-building, goodwill, common cause. That is really more than at risk with a lot of actions that were taken without the consent or even informed process for the people who have been deeply embedded in that work for a long time. I would just call that overall, something that has lacked enough accountability and transparency as a general process. And something that has, so a lot of unanswered questions in terms of, you know, is this the most responsible thing to do to protect the health of Macon County residents, to protect the sustainable progress of programs that are built on a lot of success? This is one of those areas where you have major issues, but you can have some things that we can point to in the last eighteen months that have been really important markers of progress. And where all of that is at risk right now. That's about all I can say, thank you very much.
You did good, thank you.
Before you leave, I hate to interrupt, I don't really know anything about this topic, but I would like to see the packets that she printed, can she?
Absolutely, I'd also be happy to send you all a full copy of our report.
I think she had a packet.
I am pleased you'd find it, I'd be happy to send you any information that's relevant to all of that.
Are you familiar with Board of Health?
Yes.
Have you presented there?
Not, we presented to them in our, in our, in our initial report out on the, on the findings from the report that we did, not around this particular topic.
But not to a Board of Health meeting?
Not yet around the, you know, changes that occurred around staffing and funding and things like that. We have reported out to the Board of Health on the findings from our food assessments for Macon County.
Well, I'm on the Board of Health and I've never gotten one.
Well, we will be happy to send this to you.
But we meet six times a year, we had a meeting, crap, I guess it'll be a month, month and a half before a meeting.
I'd be delighted to follow up with you all.
I know when the next Board of Health meeting and y'all need to present to them.
Please count me in, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Sarah Crawford Miller.
Good evening Commissioners, good evening Commissioners, my name is Sarah Crawford Miller, and I was born and raised right here in Macon County. I'm also here on behalf of the Produce RX Program, and I'm here on behalf of the clients. I'm a stay-at-home mom, my husband works over forty hours a week to make sure that that happens. This program benefited us enough to be able to purchase a home this year in Otto, and may still be a stay-at-home mom, and provided fresh fruits and vegetables and homemade sourdough every week for our family. Sorry.
I'm good.
Okay, we need to stick to the script. We get back to where I was. Okay. Being a participant in this program helped me be aware of the small local farms in our area that I had no idea existed. War Cry, Micro Grain Company, Three Barn Farms, the Dill Family Farm, I never even knew they existed. Now I follow them on social media and look for them, to purchase them as a real customer. By eating foods that I know were helping farms stay in business, and by being a real customer, I was not only supporting my neighbors, I was supporting them and helping the environment, which is a core value I helped to install in my daughters, who are three years old and six months old. Going to the monthly classes was another highlight of the program. I got to have my blood work checked while I was pregnant, my blood pressure checked, which eased my mind. I got to experience cooking demos, which encouraged my three-year-old to try new foods. In fact, when PBS Kids was there to support this program at Windings Stare Farms on Highlands Road, my daughter sang, "You gotta try new foods 'cause it might taste gooood," and if you don't know, that's from Daniel Tiger's Neighborhood. She also got to play with local children and learn about how healthy foods can make her healthy. I appreciated how nonjudgmental the staff was who made these events happen. There were plenty of hugs given and received as they congratulated me on my new baby. In fact, whenever we bought our new home, Darnell Farms even gave us an extra bucket of strawberries. I just can't say enough about how much this program benefited our lives in a positive way. I'm sorry. I truly hope that this program continues because it not only helps the most impoverished of our, of our county, but it also helps the middle class prosper. And if by chance this program gets shut down, then I hope that you understand how many lives will be affected, how many bellies might go hungry because the choice is made. Not just the people who are a part of the program, but the staff who might be rehired as new people. And also, this program had secured funding for an entire year, for next year, and now we don't even know if we're gonna get to be a part of it. It blows my mind at the callousness at which these decisions can be made and the lack of accountability of the people in charge. Thank you for hearing me.
Bill McCarthy.
See you?
Yep.
There you are, yeah.
Hi, Douglas.
Yeah, I tried, but I can't get over that. Well, I am Bill McCarthy, y'all know me. And I'm gonna speak very briefly to the question of proposed changes to the soil erosion and sedimentation ordinance. One of the purposes of this meeting is supposedly informational, and there's really no way I can properly inform the Commissioners or anyone else in five minutes. I have provided the Commission with a technical document, prepared from my standpoint as a professional aquatic biologist working in this county. I know some other people with expertise have done similar things. And I would say to the Commissioners, not in a condemning way, if you haven't had time to read these documents, you really come to this meeting unprepared.
Could you speak up a little, please?
Yes, to get right on to the issue of soil erosion and sedimentation, we're talking about natural processes here. An uncomfortable fact is that wherever there is moderately dense human population, the rate of soil erosion and its deposition of sediment in our waterways reaches levels above what naturally occurs with undesirable consequences. This is a management problem, and sedimentation is just like crime or disease. It can be managed, but not eliminated. We need to minimize it. In this context, my strong belief is that any action which potentially doubles the amount of bare soil exposed to erosion during the process of land development is a step in the wrong direction. Please maintain the ordinance as it is. And I know there's several other people here tonight who would like to speak on this issue in the same sense and probably aren't gonna have time, I just wanted to acknowledge that they're all here. I would also like to speak to a larger issue surrounding this ordinance and the others. Several members of county government have asked for information on technical matters related to these issues. However, when recently several individuals, including my However, when recently several individuals, including myself, have sought to meet with individual Commissioners with the purpose of sharing information, we've been informed that this would violate the open meetings law. I find this illogical and confusing. My understanding of the intent of so-called sunshine laws is that they are enacted to prevent improper decision-making by elected bodies, not to impede communication and information flow between public servants and the public. With that in mind, I'm going to practice what I preach, which is ask an expert. Specifically, I would like to ask the county attorney to explain whether or not the open meeting law actually applies to the case of a single Commissioner trying to gather information from knowledgeable constituents. And in that same context, I would like to also refer to a meeting that happened some months ago when the watershed ordinance, the floodplain ordinance was the subject of discussion. A committee was formed consisting of members of the Commission Planning Board and the then-county planner. They held a meeting, which as far as I know was not public. I even heard that some of the Commissioners didn't know about it until the meeting was over, and they submitted some formal recommendations for alterations to the ordinance, which has yet to be voted on. I would therefore also like to ask the county attorney to speak to the legality of that meeting or any other similar meetings. If, in fact, the open meeting law prohibits the direct exchange of information outside of formal public meetings, then we need to go back to the old idea of forming an expert committee which will meet publicly to provide relevant information to you people. And I would be real pleased if one of you decided to put that in the form of a motion. Either way, a lot of us feel that, I don't want to say that anybody's doing this deliberately, but information flow is being impeded by a general lack of understanding about certain matters, which I assume the county attorney can help elucidate. Thank you.
Thank you. I did it. If you feel like it's your position, but I'm the one that did it.
Hey, here.
Okay, so I can certainly confirm that there is nothing wrong with the county Commissioner talking to anyone in this community about any issue. So that is certainly an open topic. There was a lot thrown out there, and I'm not sure completely of all the facts as far as to speak from off the cuff. I do have attorney-client privilege with this board, and so I'm not going to comment on anything else that was requested there.
Thank you. Rose, come on in. Rose James.
Well, thank you. It's good to see so many friends and family and neighbors that are like family, that are sticking up for our community. I appreciate everybody being there. I'm here, can I move it down a little bit? I know you're not supposed to touch it, but I mean, I'm a short person.
Yeah, you can. That's fine.
Thank you.
We'll have to ask the sheriff.
Uh-oh. Okay. So I did want to speak to the fact that we were going to present the health report. Nicole was fired three days before she was allowed to speak on this topic that is so important to Macon County. I am a registered nurse, born and raised here in Franklin, North Carolina, and I recently moved back to bring my family home, so I'm glad to be here. So I've worked as a registered nurse for fifteen years. I have made it my passion and my career to work with programs that prevent chronic diseases and more recently to address nutrition security. And I say nutrition because it is about nutrition and not just quality. I have collaborated with Mountain Wise for many years in different capacities. Most recently, I've collaborated with them with their produce prescription program. This program provided families with fifty dollars worth of fresh fruits and vegetables a week for months at a time, and it was solely based from local farmers. So that is a very important point to understand. As a program educator and selected Healthy People, Healthy Carolina Leadership Team person, I'm also on the Board of Mano Food Bank. So together, sorry, most recently I have collaborated with the produce prescription program as a nutrition educator and a farmer's market founder, the new farmer's market here, and as a board member of Mano Food Bank. What those fancy names mean is that I'm highly involved in our local food system in western North Carolina and specifically Macon County, and that's really important. I work for the EBCI right now, and that is what keeps me protected right now because it is very nerve-wracking as a nurse, knowing that I'm speaking about the public health department because that affects my future job opportunities. And it also affects people's job opportunities who can't be here to speak today because they're too scared to speak out publicly. When I first started palleting this produce prescription program for the eastern band of Cherokee Indians, I was highly encouraged by the health outcomes I saw. Not only were we putting food directly into the mouths of people who needed it, but in collaboration with the Cherokee Hospital, we were able to pick people who directly needed the nutrition security for both their chronic diseases and because they needed it financially. Because of taking such detailed lab work, we were able to see significant impact in only three months of receiving fresh fruits and vegetables every week. How many people here have been told they need to change their diet and then given no funding or no food to be able to do it? Right? So, let's see. It really changes your mind, body, and soul when you can receive such quality produce. I've seen this model not only create community amongst its members, but create health and vitality. In more recent times, Nicole Heimwoll was hired as the Director for Mountain Wise. Through her leadership, I have applied, I've seen her unparalleled ability to work with so many people and personalities towards the common goal of creating nutrition security throughout western North Carolina. Her extreme care for the local western North Carolina communities paired with her abilities in grant writing and project management has truly impacted the lives of so many in this community, my family, my friends, my neighbors. So let's take a moment to talk about nutrition security and what that means. You may not have heard, overfed and undernourished. It's when we provide people who are hungry, over-processed canned shelf-stable ingredients, and that creates chronic disease. I worry about my community as I watch homestead after homestead be torn down and made of housing developments. Not only, not that I don't see the need for housing, but I know there are other ways to accomplish this goal without further depleting our precious farmland. I sat and watched farm after farm struggle during COVID-19 pandemic, as well as household after household struggle to put food or even find food to put on their table regardless of COVID. Post-COVID, many farms had shut down because their food was sold mostly to restaurants, and those restaurants were shutting down, so you see the problem. This negatively impacted the livelihood of many local farmers. These produce prescription programs not only offer true nutrition security for those who need it, but they kept farmers in business, and with farms in business, if we have another pandemic, we know what to do. I can't fathom any program or true leader that would turn down two hundred thousand dollars that would go directly to our local farmers and our local people who need nutrition. I think it's selfish and evil.
Who's on ours?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you, School Board, for showing up, all the staff. Are we not blessed?
Yes.
I'm coming to speak because of some things that were said at last month's meeting, and I didn't get to make it, but I listened to it live. This flooding zone, I don't know a whole lot about it, so I'm not going to stand here and tell you I do. But I do know you cannot control the rivers. You cannot control these little creeks. You cannot control these little branches. It's all over these mountains. As a young child, my dad took me all over these mountains in Macon County to Jen's Night. I remember him digging a hole so we could get a drink of water. When it rains three and four inches and within an hour, you're going to have flooding issues. And then I heard a remark about getting rid of the campgrounds. Are you serious? When I was growing up, we either went to the lake, we either went to the rivers, to riverbanks, or we went to the ocean, but you cannot control the rivers. Another thing I want to bring up is when citizens of Macon County comes up here and speak, we always may not agree, but for a citizen to bring up a livelihood of one of you Commissioners, for instance, uncalled for. That was brought up at last month's meeting against Mr. Young. What he does in his way of living or his way of providing for his family should never come up at this board meeting. That should be off limits for anyone. But I want to thank you Commissioners for everything you do do, just like the School Board, we're blessed. My main goal, I will always stand up and fight for our Commissioners, I will always stand up and fight for our School Board, I will always stand up and fight for our law enforcement, our AMTs, our fire departments. Without y'all, we're nothing. And I want, you know, the best example I want for my children and my grandchildren and my nieces and nephews, and I have all over Macon County schools. I have a grandchild from kindergarten up. I think we're blessed with our schools. And I want to thank you for voting for the new hospital, because I'm going to have grown kids that's going to be in that new hospital. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Susan Irvin, and I am a forty-year resident of Little Macon County. I am speaking to the Sedimentation and Erosion Control Ordinance. I was on the Planning Board when the ordinance was written and passed, as well as the other ordinances under consideration for weakening. At that time, many people of the public, many members of the public and professionals attended our meetings and contributed to the understanding of the issues. Among those were many grading contractors. At the public hearing, a group of grading contractors led by Paul Schuler, whom I'm sure you all know, stood up together in support of the ordinance. They did this because they, as experienced professionals, know that there is a right way to do things and know that there need to be guidelines, inspections, and controls over earth movement. An acre of raw disturbed earth is a whole lot. The current ordinance does not stop development, it helps to promote proper development and procedures. Not everyone knows what best practices are, and there are certainly those who would not choose to follow them if they don't have to. Like other speakers, I am concerned that there has been no sufficient process to hear from those who have real working knowledge about the effects that weakening these ordinances would have. When we originally developed the ordinance, we studied the issue, we did what the Planning Board is supposed to do, we weren't told what the Commissioners wanted. We met publicly and listened to expert testimony and then made our recommendations. The recommendations you're now considering were made in a closed meeting. Also, at the last meeting, we were told that this would be denied, when people should come and be prepared to present factual information. Because of so many items on the agenda, a number of people are not going to be allowed to speak tonight. It's not just the citizens of Macon County who lose from this process, but you, the Commissioners, have been deprived of the information and input that would help you to do your jobs. You've heard about the impacts that weakening this ordinance will have over the last months. It is not speculation that sediment has a negative impact. It is not opinion, it is fact. Tourism is our biggest economic activity, and our beautiful mountains, streams, and rivers are one of the biggest draws. So that would be an economic impact, as well as a negative impact on fishing, swimming, boating, biodiversity, and stream health in general. Buggy streams and rivers, mud running under the roads, ditches full, slopes eroding. It's clearly not in the best interest of our county or the wishes of the public that you weaken these ordinances. Please act in the public good and maintain the strength of the Sedimentation and Erosion Control Ordinance, as well as the other two. Thank you.
Carolyn Porter.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Porter, I'm a Macon County resident, and I oppose the proposed changes to the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Ordinance. And I appreciate the opportunity to address you again, as I have the other day. We do have limits of time to present this. I hope you'll recall the many comments that you were able to hear at our last meeting that addressed this issue. I oppose the proposed, excuse me, I oppose the proposed changes for the following reasons. I have a tongue twister for myself there. Required plan for sediment mitigation under the current ordinance is reasonable. Unmitigated erosion increases the risk of property and infrastructure damage. Erosion from sites pushes not just silt, but also construction debris into the properties of adjacent owners, roads, and internal waters. Uncontrolled sediment can clog sewers. Sediment buildup can also increase flooding because there's less of a channel to absorb runoff. Remediation of silted rivers is difficult, expensive, and not always successful. The cost of this damage and future remediation will be passed on to Macon County citizens either as individuals or as taxpayers. Voting to change this ordinance may well end up being a vote in favor of higher taxes in our future. Our waterway is not the only issue. Sediment that washes across land smothers vegetation and alters soil chemistries. The death of surface vegetation encourages erosion, further degrading the land. We know the risk of slides in our county is real. The Little Tennessee Watershed is a significant draw to Macon County, as other Speakers will agree to. It supports tourism and job. Visitors come to fish, to paddle, and they want to spend money in restaurants, rentals, gift shops. The dollars these visitors bring supports our local economy. They will not come here if our rivers and streams are polluted. Resources like the rivers and streams of our watershed make all of our homes and properties in Macon County more appealing and therefore more valuable. Macon County's tax base benefits from this enhanced property value. Degrading our rivers devalues our tax base. In addition, a visit to any of the put-ins or beaches, as we call them, along the river will find Macon County citizens and their children enjoying a clean river. Let's protect this resource for Macon County residents now and into the future. Some argue that discussing the biodiversity of a river or how nice the fish are is a waste of time. I hope that's not true. Sediment does kill aquatic communities, and I would ask our local fishermen if they want the little t to run brown like the tuckusid. No evidence has been presented that this ordinance causes undue hardship. If there are issues, let's address them in a responsible and has been requested in transparent way. I'm not persuaded by outlier cases, and you shouldn't be either. The loudest or wealthiest voices may not represent the best interests of the citizens of Macon County. Some proponents of the ordinance have called it a compromise or middle of the road. This language hides the reality of the cumulative effect of even small changes. Further, we have an ordinance that works, based on careful consideration and made in consultation with experts. We're being asked to give this up for something that doesn't work as well. That's not a compromise. Other proponents have said the changes must be reasonable because they're still better than the state requires, or as good as the state requires, but we know our mountain landscape is different. The bare minimum established in Raleigh does not fit here. Many of us live downstream and downslope. We owe it to our neighbors to ensure our sediment doesn't end up in their lawn, their creek, or in their pond. As elected representatives, I know that you know it's your responsibility to make a more decision. At a minimum, I encourage you to consult with experts in a transparent process to better understand the issue. My assumptions are sometimes wrong, and yours may be too. Finally, I would ask, what do you want your legacy to be? I hope it's that you protected our lands and waters for generations to come. Thank you.
We'll take, I think this is a little, we'll take one more, one more person to speak within that five minutes. Then the remaining people here, and you have to think about this, the remaining people on this list will have the, tell me, will have the first opportunity to speak. tell me, help me, will have the first opportunity to speak at the next meeting on this subject.
The next meeting where there's public comment.
Public comment, at the next meeting. I, I, I think that's, that's the ruling on it. But we'll go ahead and, that would leave, we'll go ahead and let Mr. Haas, Alex.
Thank commissioners. All right. Well, my name is Alex Feis. Some of y'all might recognize me from last meeting. It was so much fun and I came back here for more. I want to say I oppose the proposed changes to the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance. We have allocated so little time to discuss this today. Thank goodness, everything I want to say boils down to one word, irreversible. Destroying this ordinance is irreversible damage to your county. All I can really do with this little bit of time is remind you what the experts have told you many, many times. We know how harmful erosion is and sediment is to our rivers. We know that our rivers can't come back from the damage we proposed. We know that land developed cannot be recovered for farming. And we know that land washed away cannot be recovered here. So, please commissioners, listen to the experts, protect our rivers, protect our land, because the consequences are irreversible. Macon County is stuck with the decisions that you make forever. If you make the wrong decision here, and you destroy this ordinance, and open the floodgates for development, it's not a mistake that we can fix. Commissioners, today you approved funding for New York High School because you care deeply for the future generations of this county. So why not then protect the land and rivers so that they can enjoy it as much as we do today? Thank you. And Alex, we have three more minutes. Why not let just one more person?
You can't, you can't dedicate your time to another person. Thank you, sir.
Just putting it out there, thank you both.
Thank you, sir. Now, from what, at the next meeting, the ruling is, we have twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, oh, we've got two fourteens. We have fifteen people that would be put on that list as being first to speak on this. Is that right, Ms. Keiser? Would you like me to read the names? Is that appropriate? I'll leave this with you. The names are Richard Lightner, Ed Hyatt, Paul Chu, Michelle. You'll have to help me, Michelle. Are you IGR, okay?
Rupa.
All right. Cindy.
Harris.
Harris, Bob Aculla, SC, Bobby Long, Erosion Control. Okay, let me see. Cindy, are you on Erosion?
No, I'm on up and burning. You're not.
SC Ben, you're on Erosion. Doug. Whitburn, you're on Erosion too, right? Your, your topic would be what we're talking about tonight, right?
It's very condensed and covers the three.
Sorry, friend, have to, have to keep with this.
There are some of those who won't be at the next meeting. What they have is actually a proposal which I can leave in writing with the commissioner.
That'd be fine. You can leave it, yeah. Thank you, Sue Bob Base. Where, where's Bob? Let's see.
No, Scott.
Base?
Scott.
We got Scott.
You got the last name right. That'd be, yeah.
All right. I'm doing good, I'm doing good tonight, Bob.
Can we talk about soil erosion that next time, or is it going to be a different subject?
Betsy, well, y'all be the next time. Erosion, erosion. Heather, Heather, are you an Erosion person?
Soil erosion and for the $200,000 that was sent back that helped our community.
I don't think it matters, does it? It doesn't matter what they're signed up for to speak on. This is public comment session.
Right. I didn't know if they wanted, some people will choose to come. Okay, that's fine. Betsy, you're on for next time. Heather, you're on for next time. Sarah Johnson, you're on for next time.
Would you like me to leave some of my stuff with y'all? It's on the Erosion Control, or do you want me to bring it next time?
Bring it next time. And Jason Love. Is it Angie Martin? Next time? And Jim Gaston, next time. And I'll leave this with Patty Keiser. And she opens up this area at 5:30, and we'll make sure your names, but the ruling says your names will be on that first.
Could I ask a question?
I hear somebody, but.
Could I ask a question? Last month, you said that there would be public sessions for each of the three ordinances. Tonight was to be Sedimentation and Erosion Control. Next month was to be Drinking Water Watershed. And then the next month was to be Flood Plains. So if we're moving all the sediment and erosion control to next month, that means we won't get to any of the Drinking Water Watershed. So then they'll be the next, yeah, I'm just asking how that.
You're exactly right. And the only thing I can say to you, I'll confer with the attorney on the Hadduk. I thought that while I got some, wow, we're going to fill up next month on this topic or different topics. And we're, we should be focusing on another topic. I'll have to confer with the attorney for that.
So we've had the public hearings on all three of these last month. So the public hearings have been held. This is just public comment on any topic. So you're, you're still on the list. You can speak about any topic when it's, when you have the, except for personnel.
My comment does not go with the direction of the battle.
I got you, yeah. I see what, what Mr. Earl was talking about now, I see. I was just trying to pull them out of there. Okay. But, so we'll have that many on the first issue, but you're, sir, you're exactly right. I don't know what, I don't know what the answer to that. Because you're looking at ten or twelve people here that's moving on to another forty-five minute or somebody else's time. And I'll have to confer with him and see that. We'll, I'll try to get you some yea or nay or what on that. Okay, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate all your help and work, and I'll be careful driving home. Well, they're welcome to stay.
It's way down here.
Yeah. But we won't do that to forget to. But it may end up, may end up. That's on your agenda.
Twelve D.
Twelve D. No, not twelve D.
Ten D.
Ten D. We will, we go down the agenda. If you want to hang out here, we will be back visiting this topic in twelve D. And if you want, if you want minutes, you want to hang with us, and we'll discuss it. That'd be discussing regarding Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Ordinance, Commissioner Gary Shields. And I'll give my time to the liaison person, Josh Young. You're welcome to hang in here with us, or, so you may not have a meeting next Monday or next month if you looked at it. What do you want to do? We got, we got the topic coming up on eleven D, ten D. And if you want to stay, hang in. But now, I need to go back.
Do you have the sign up sheet?
Addition.
We got this one? Okay, any additions to the agenda?
Have one, really quick. We can probably, one of the public.
You want this, Paul?
No. All right, one addition to the agenda, just a quick, is Jack Morgan here. Just wanted him to give us about a two-minute update on the Nantahala Library Community Status. And we can put that wherever you want there. Oh, Jack's staying late for his presentations.
I see.
Nine C.
We're looking at CDE. We're looking at ten E, Paul.
Nine C. Nantahala Community, Nantahala Library Community Center, I see.
You can do that?
Totally.
Jack Morgan. Okay, any more additions to the agenda? If not, I don't have to close it out. Do a Mr. Wrong. Adjustments to an approval of the agenda. Anything else?
Did you just say adjustments to an approval of the agenda?
Number eight, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think I would like for twelve C on the consent agenda. Macon County Public Health Billing Guide Fee Plan. I'd like that removed.
Removed?
Yes. And placed in new business under eleven B.
So twelve, twelve C goes to eleven B.
Yes, of course.
Okay, any more, any more adjustments?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Say.
Any further discussion? All in agreement? Raise your right hand. You're okay? All the polls will be zero. Let's see.
You want to take a five-minute?
At five, we, hey, we'll take a, we've been sitting here a long time. Let's give us about a five, eight minutes.
Need to stretch every two hours.
Pardon me?
Need to stretch every two hours.
I think he's being kind. When we send up a stretch, I'm going to go to the restroom.
Need to stretch every two.
Oh.
Do you need a change of clothes?
Yes.
All right, Shelley.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, please, under additions to the agenda, I apologize, um, we need to add an item under new business. Uh, which I think.
Let me find new business. Okay, B C, R B?
I think it will now be C.
C?
New business. Um, declaration of a ser- of a service weapon as surplus.
Did you get an email? Would you be the question?
Twelve.
To do this tonight?
It'll be new business.
Eleven C.
I think it is C now, because we added a billing guide, it's eleven B.
D schedule is eleven D.
Yes.
Eleven C pistol. Motion to approve, do we need additional motion on that or not?
Yeah, when we get there, yes.
Second.
You probably give, uh, what you call, your his weapon. We'll, we'll, we'll walk to, use a liaison law enforcement. We'll work it out. We'll, we'll, we're good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Higginson.
On what it is?
The, uh, on the pistol deal, uh, he's the liaison, I'd sent an email that he would be the presen- do the presentation tonight. And when we get down to that, we'll, we'll give directions. Where's the sheriff?
Brent does that, uh, cut and dry, Brent, the sheriff.
Yeah, but I.
There's the sheriff right there behind you.
But I think we have, I think Mr. Antoine is the law enforcement liaison, will be part of the.
Yeah, okay, uh, just addition to the agenda, eleven C will be his presentation.
Well, what's, what's eleven B?
Eleven B is, uh, Make County Health, D schedule.
D schedule, oh, I got you covered, yeah. Uh, then the C is the weapon exchange, or whatever you call it.
It's the declaration of a service weapon as surplus property.
I may ask you for that again, of the name of, when we get there. Shelley? You wanna stay all night?
I'm here as long as you want me to be here. Um, first, let's say, thank you so much for having me, um, as you know, my name is Shelley Foreman, I'm the Community Relations Regional Director for Vaya Health. Um, I always like to start the meeting by thanking, um, Chairman Shields, he's a wonderful addition to our Vaya Health Regional Board, uh, serving the seven westernmost counties, and he, um, participates and, uh, supports the needs of not just Macon County, but the region as well. Um, Patrick Beckencourt, your DSS Director, is also a very devoted member, as well as a member of our Vaya Health Board. And I'm gonna try to go very quickly tonight, because I am like the first on your official agenda, and you've got many, many more items. Um, as you know, for the last, oh, eight years, the state of North Carolina has been moving towards Medicaid managed care. And what that means is the state of North Carolina has adopted a system where they contract, um, with health plans to manage all health and now behavioral health services for people with, um, in need of Medicaid services. Vaya Health has been a public manager of Medicaid and state funds for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, as well as behavioral health issues, uh, since two thousand and twelve. But as of July first, Vaya Health took on new responsibilities for those folks who are in our health plan. So as of July first, uh, Vaya Health is now responsible for all of the medical, meaning the physical healthcare needs of individuals in our plan members, uh, as well as pharmacy needs of folks in our plan. So what is Vaya Total Care, and what is the Taylor Plan? As you know, several years ago, um, four private insurance, uh, companies began managing Medicaid funds for physical health, as well as very mild to moderate mental health or substance use issues. Um, on July first, Vaya Health Plan expanded, as I said, to continue to offer all of the behavioral health and specialized services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities that we have been managing. But again, we've taken on their physical and healthcare needs. Vaya Health is one of four L and B MCOs that are public agencies in the state of North Carolina doing this as of July first. You can see the areas and the counties that each of these four, uh, public L and B MCOs, um, manage services in. Um, so how do folks in your community know that they are a member of Vaya Health's, uh, health plan? Um, all of the folks that we were currently serving, um, before July first, um, in the spring, got information in the mail, um, where they were asked to make selections of their primary care provider, um, as well as their care management agency, which could be Vaya, or one of several private, um, companies that do that. Um, once those selections were made, um, new cards were mailed to folks, just like your insurance card that says Vaya Total Care, with all the information they need to reach out for any service that they're in need of. Um, so what's new? Um, again, our, um, agency, Vaya, has been working for the last several years to contract with, um, our region's hospital systems, health systems, FQHCs, health departments, um, primary care providers, specialty doctors, um, and durable medical equipment. So we now have a comprehensive, uh, network of providers that are able to deliver the healthcare to members. One thing I wanted to just let you know is that, um, between now and through the fall, or, or at some point beyond, we are continuing, um, to work with our members, if they have a primary care doc or a specialist that they go see who hasn't currently contracted with Vaya, we're going ahead and authorizing those services, letting those services pass. We're working to get their provider in our network. But I will say, a vast majority of, um, our hospital and health systems and primary care docs are in our network, so. But we continue to work on that, and we will ensure that no member, um, is denied care from the provider of their choice. Of course, we continue, um, to provide the full range of specialty services, both community-based services for behavioral health and intellectual and developmental disabilities, um, as well as therapeutic foster care, residential services for adults and children, um, and, and really what they need to help them be successful in their health. Um, so what's new for Vaya members? Um, again, they've gotten their ID card in the mail that will have, uh, information they need. Um, we have, uh, we still maintain our behavioral health crisis line, which is twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So if someone's having a mental health or substance use crisis, they can call. Um, we have a member and recipient information line that's open for regular business hours. And we now have a pharmacy line, a nursing line, and a special line, because Vaya now schedules all non-emergency Medicaid transportation, um, for our health plan members. And that would be transportation for doctor's appointments, chemotherapy, dialysis, dialysis, or behavioral health appointments, or whatever help that they need in getting to their either medical or, uh, behavioral healthcare. Um, one of the things I just wanna quickly go through, um, so one of the things that we offer, we're offering to our Vaya Total Care members, and those are the folks in our health plan, uh, health plan, we're just calling it Vaya Total Care, is what we call Vaya Total Care perks. Um, so I don't have to read all those out to you, but there are a whole variety of things that folks, if they're eligible, they can receive wellness perks, um, pregnancy perks, uh, GED and education perks, um, safety and home, um, home assistance, um, support, as well as, uh, transportation for non-medical needs, so to go to the library, the grocery store, that type of thing. And again, um, for anyone who's a member of Vaya Total Care and is in the Taylor Plan, we're scheduling all of their, uh, medical transportation needs as well. Um, by, um, everyone in the Taylor Plan, um, is, uh, able to have a Taylor Care Manager, that can be from Vaya Health, uh, or for agencies such as Blue Ridge Health, or Outlaw Ching Community Services. Um, they can arrange medical appointments, provide support for health issues, help connect people with resources in the community, um, and really help them, um, get connected to all those social determinants of health needs, that we know help people be healthier and more successful. The last thing I'll mention is, um, it's very exciting, um, starting in the spring, um, uh, the Vaya Health Plan members that received Medicaid became eligible for the Healthy Opportunities Pilot. It's a wonderful pilot that the Dogwood Health Trust had applied for and received, and it really promotes the social needs of individuals on Medicaid to help improve, um, the quality of life for them, as well as to reduce healthcare costs. So, um, through our health plan, as well as the other four standard plans, the insurance plans, um, they can, um, get things related to housing supports, and that could be renovation, um, quality and safety improvements, and even securing one-time-one payments, uh, food supports to help them with health and nutrition. Uh, again, transportation supports, another resource for transportation, as well as programs and legal services for individuals who are dealing with interpersonal violence. So that was very, very fast, but I know you have a long agenda, we have been waiting a very long time, uh, for this to occur. Um, I would say, um, we know there will be bumps in the road, uh, we're taking on a huge new role and responsibility. Um, so if you hear any questions or concerns, um, from your constituents or from your agencies, of course, um, most of those folks know how to reach me, but please give me a call. I'll help get them connected and help try to work through any issues that they have through our Vaya staff. So thank you for that.
Shelley, in our meeting the other day, um, this is really pertinent information.
Yes.
How can these people find it? I, I, you know, we're sitting in this room here, and we're hearing you, and trying to see that. How, how can they contact you to take time and read this information?
Okay.
It's very, very important.
What I would say is, we have a wonderful website that has information about all of this. And it's Vaya Health, you can either Google Vaya Health, um, or it's, um, Vaya Health, um, VayaHelp.org. And you can go ahead and go on our website, um, and I can send that information, um, to Tammy to be distributed. Um, we, we're doing a lot of flyers, news releases, you can go to the Department of Health and Human Service website. But if you just go and look for Vaya Health, or, um, call, um, our one-eight-hundred number, um, that would be a, a number you could call, and that would be one-eight-hundred-eight-four-nine-six-one-two-seven.
But Vaya Health, V A Y A H E A L T H.
Right.
Is probably their easiest, as we sit here, if they wanted to walk outside and see this information, they could do it.
Yep.
Okay.
And if they're, uh, if they are a health plan member, if they have, if they were in the past and are currently, they have all that information on their card and can call us.
Yeah, and this is the, the, the new Medicaid thing?
It's, it's the culmination of Medicaid transformation.
Yeah. And the information that you shared with us a week or so ago is real, real new, but it's real, real important, because it pertains to whole families.
Yes.
Okay, it, it, it's a good thing, but you need to tune into it a little bit, go to Vaya Health and, and sit down on the couch and look at it.
Right, as I said, if you, um, just go and look under, look for Vaya Health, V A Y A H E A L T H, it'll pop up, um, and, uh, you can look on our website, and all of this information is on the website, is, and much more information.
Good. Thank you, Shelley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Careful driving home.
Yeah, okay.
Let's see, farmland protection, Doug, where's Doug at? There you go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the time to speak this moment. You can put that clock back up, because I promise you, it'll only be five minutes. I'm just introducing a couple of people that are gonna talk to you about the actual plan. Uh, just a little bit of background, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, Macon-Solwater District, Conservation District, uh, applied for and received a grant from Ag Development Trust Fund, uh, in the state of North Carolina to, uh, develop a farmland protection plan for Macon County. And we subsequently hired a, um, hired the Foothills Regional Commission out of, uh, Rutherford County, uh, to do this plan. Now, you might ask why we hired someone from Rutherford County to have to do a Macon County's plan, but, uh, the short answer to that is, it's a whole lot closer than Mount Olive, because that was the next place we could find it, that, that, from people that still do these plans. And I think part of that is that, uh, most counties in North Carolina have already, um, already have a pet farmland protection plan in place. Uh, but this just, uh, highlights agriculture, provides a little bit of framework for grant opportunities going forward, and for, uh, you know, to keep, kinda, uh, somebody to help maintain, uh, the viability of agriculture in a fluid economy. Uh, that was the short answer why we hired them, but, but the real answer is they, they do a good job, um, and, uh, their reputation precedes them, and so, uh, I had confidence they would put together a good document, and I think you, I think y'all have a, a copy of it in your packet, and I think our confidence was well placed, too, that it did turn out as well. Uh, but at this time, I'll, I'll introduce their. Okay, well, I, I was putting one back there. Uh, Magnolia Long and Alan Tony with, uh, Foothills Regional Commission, and I promise you, they'll be brief, too, because they go longer out back.
Uh, good evening, Commissioner, thanks for having us.
You got a haircut.
I did get a haircut, just for you, Chairman.
All right.
First off, it's great to be out here in Franklin, um, so, it's always good to come, even if other west than where we normally are. I think we were joking, if, uh, Rutherford County even counted, that's the mountains, but we at least get to see some of them from Foothills, right? Uh, one thing I did wanna say is, my dad's a commissioner down in Rutherford County, so I know how hard it is to be on that side of the dais. And I do appreciate y'all's service to the community and everything you do, because it's a hard job, you don't make a ton of money, and it's, it's challenging, you do it because you love your community, so I do appreciate that.
Very glad, Doug, speaking.
So we're gonna now just jump right into it, kinda, so this was commissioned by your Macon County Solwater Department here in two thousand and twenty-two. Kinda started that conversation with saying, hey, we want a farmland protection plan. Um, we use a three-pronged approach on our planning work, so we do surveys, interviews, and data review. Um, lucky for us, the U.S. Census Factbook collects a lot of data, and we were lucky enough, too, as we were finishing up the plant here in early two thousand and twenty-four, that two thousand and twenty-two numbers were out, so we got to compare four different sets of data, two thousand and seven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and seventeen, and two thousand and twenty-two. We got to survey some farmers, uh, big thanks to Doug and Solwater staff and everyone else for getting that out to our farmers. A little harder for us when we're two, a little over two hours away to get that out, and they don't know who we are. You know, who are you, where are you from, what are you doing? A lot easier when it's someone they know and already trust, right? And then finally, we came up and interviewed some farmers over the course of the day, and got to see their operations. It's a great process, just to hear directly from someone, hey, what's your operation like? What are your challenges? Well, what's going well for you, what's happening here? Really, really enjoyable experience, it was great to talk with everybody. So what, what is the state of agriculture, right? So we did this large and depth data review, and the question is, what is the state of agriculture here in Macon County? So there on the right-hand side, you can see this is a map of all your present used value, uh, properties within agriculture. A lot of times when we do these plans, um, we, we done one in Rutherford, working, you know, hopefully finishing up this one in Macon, working in Durham. So we work all over the state, and y'all have, sometimes it's clusters, right? We have this area in the county, that's where El Dehag is. Y'all aren't so much like that, it's more spread out, it's more, more in different locations, it's really. It's really unique. It's cool to see. It's a good thing to see for those trans agriculture long-term. Most recently, you had about $6.6 million in sales. Four million of that was crops, 2.6 million of that was livestock. Hage, your leading crop in acres. Fruit, tree nuts, berries, that's really your leading crop in dollar amounts. Livestock, that's your leading crop, that's your leading animal product in both acres and dollar amount. By far, it's not really close. We are starting to see some of that change throughout the state. Obviously, out east, you've got larger pig operations. But we're seeing more and more broilers come and make a, you know, kind of be a variable, you know, profitable way forward for farmers. Finally, from 2007 to 2022, you had 346 farms. It stayed the same. Doesn't mean every single year it was 346 farms. It went down, it shot back up. It did a little bit of this number. You did have a small increase in land of about 3.9%. That's a good thing. Means your farmland lands grow. That means farming must be at least of interested folks who live here. Finally, for your farms, you have 346 farms in total. 231 of those were 50 acres or less. This is not uncommon for where y'all are. Mountains, topography, those kind of things can make things challenging. A lot of your farms are smaller, sub-scale operations. We like to call those the, you know, I may not be someone doing it full-time. To someone who supplement with a town job, could be a hobby farm, could be a second job, could be any number of things. Your farms over 170 acres, though, has increased 50%. Percentage towns did. But it means you went from 22 farms in 2007 to 33 farms in 2022. So some of your bigger operations. So some of your midsize operations, a good way to think of it, became a bigger operation. It's a good thing, too. Finally, you have about 635 operators in total. So you'll notice that number's a lot more than the number of farms you have. Could be a husband and wife team, a couple of brothers, father and son, mother and daughter. Could be any number of those things. Roughly 241 of those are new producers. That's folks who've been farming, I think, 10 years or less according to the Census of Agriculture. And your average age is 59.8. Shot up slightly in the last couple of years, shot back down to under 60. Once again, that's not uncommon in the state of North Carolina. One kind of interesting thing about agriculture, if you ask people, hey, what's North Carolina's biggest economic driver mover? You would think, oh, maybe it's banking, maybe it's manufacturing. You know, we have the banking in Charlotte, all the manufacturing in the Beaumont area. It's actually agriculture. It's a huge industry in North Carolina. A lot of that is driven in combination of sweet potatoes out east, but it's also a lot of things up here in western part of the state, too. So in our survey, we asked some folks a couple of questions. You know, it's about, we try to make a five, 10-minute survey. No one likes a survey longer than 10 minutes, I promise. One of the questions we asked is, do you have a transition plan? With the average age of our farmers being 60 years old, seems like a pretty prudent question to ask. You know, my great uncle was a farmer. He died on a tractor. But you need to have that transition plan in place and ready to go. Only about a third of folks said, yeah, I have it worked out. Little under half said, I have some ideas. And a third said something else. What I'll tell you is if you have some ideas or you have something else to say, that means you don't have a transition plan. So only about a third of your farmers from the survey had a transition plan. 100%, though, of those farmers who took the survey said it is important that my farm continues being a farm after I pass. It continues operating under agriculture. That's a big deal because it shows, hey, maybe those farmers need some assistance with transition plan. Maybe there's some programming needs there, right? Finally, we asked a question, you know, how familiar are you with, you know, voluntary agriculture districts, conservation easements, the present use value tax program? We asked them that question just to get an idea. Are you taking advantage of the programs on offer for you currently? Had a wide variety of folks saying, yeah, we're very familiar. Some weren't familiar, but would like to know more, especially on voluntary agriculture districts and conservation easements. That makes sense, right? You know, everyone knows present use value. Hey, I can, you know, I can, you know, pay less taxes, right? But the VAS, voluntary agriculture districts and the conservation easements, people always want to know more about those. 60% of folks said, hey, we want to expand our farming operation over the next five years. So y'all got the majority of folks saying, hey, how can we do more? How can we make this bigger? So we asked two more questions. And these are two I just wanted to highlight with y'all. And one of those is kind of a business development question. What would you, would you like to learn more about any of the following? The first one, hey, I want to learn more about products I can grow myself. It's pretty common. I think your Solon Water, your, you know, your FSA, your Cooperative Extension should do a great job of that program. But the other ones are marketing and agrisness. This is more on what we would call like the small business side of things that people want to know more about, develop their skills on. And finally, what activities do you recommend the county engagement, right? So this is more about, hey, what would you like to see the county make a spearhead? Is there programming that your agriculture folks can take home? What does that look like? Marketing, promoting local foods and farms. So that key marketing component there, yeah. And then supporting and recruiting ag business. This can look like a lot of different things, from processing to value-added products. It can look like any number of things. And then finally, the two that would tie, you know, I think enhancing the Macon County Fair kind of showed up there. And then, of course, strengthening your, you know, your agriculture programs in K-12. So strengthening that educational pipeline. We did a SWOT analysis for this. I'm not going to go in all the weeds on this, but you guys have a good climate here. I know temperatures, you know, I've heard of this, storms are changing. Climate's very good here. You have great local government agencies. I can't just tell you enough how many times we heard good comments about Solon Water, Cooperative Extension, Farm Service Agency. You know, y'all run a good ship up here. And you should take pride in that because we heard lots and lots of comment, compliments from the interviews, the surveys, everyone. I didn't just say that because Doug's here either. Weaknesses, so these are, these are things we always see. Inputs, inputs are getting harder and harder. I was talking to a guy one day and he said, I used to have eight suppliers for wine. Now I've got two. It's just getting a little more difficult. You can't really control that, though, right here in Macon County. However, we can help maybe folks with the cost of land side of things and programming to help their farming for a profit. Because ultimately, if we want farming to continue to exist, we, the farm has got to be profitable. Your opportunities, I think there's some great opportunities in kind of your local markets. Your, your kind of retail sales, more so than wholesale. Then, of course, agritourism, it's a growing industry. It's going to continue to grow. Some opportunity there. Finally, threats. This is not, once again, not unusual in the state of North Carolina. Residential and commercial development. We're one of the fastest current states in the country. In 2000, we were at 6 million people. In 2020, we were at 11 million people. 2040, we'll be at 15 million people. But don't get me wrong, a lot of those folks are moving between Charlotte and Raleigh, limited in actual. But they are moving up here, too. So we just need to cognizant of that. State's changing. It's happening. How do we deal with it, right? Just something, I should cognizant of. Your high startup cost, land's expensive. And 2024, land is very, very expensive. And if you're a farmer wanting to expand your operation, or maybe you're a new farmer wanting to start out, it can be really, really hard to buy the necessary land as well as the equipment for these things. And finally, one of the things we heard in the interviews, showed a little less than surveys, but we heard in the interviews, was the labor, was the labor side of things. Hey, where are my folks? Who would be who's going to help me work or pick or, you know, run machinery? One of those things we heard. Finally, the fun part, what should you think? What I'll tell you is this was about a 65-page plan. And I'm not going to get into the full weeds on all the details about what to do. I want to get to high points. I want to keep y'all rolling. Everyone invests in local farmers' market. This is really for small scale and farmers starting out. Your bigger operations aren't relying on farmers' market. Or if they are, they're going to Atlanta or actual, probably Atlanta. But it can allow your smaller farmers, your hobby farmers, to say, hey, instead of selling my beef wholesale, suddenly I'm selling it retail to make a lot more profit that way, right? Just, you know, once again, that marketing, increase awareness about opportunities and resources. Providing support and working assistance to farmers and agris businesses. It's a really key component. And then, of course, you know, hey, is there a way to diversify crops? Is there a way to diversify your livestock operations to increase your profitability?
Mr. Tony?
Yes, sir.
I'm expecting to see that farm picture.
It's on the very front one. I'll go back to it.
Because that's our local farm. I don't want you to, this is very crucial, but I wanted to make sure that the local farm got a little PR.
Yes, sir. So right there on the front page of my slide and on the front page of the plan, it's one of y'all's local farms with the.
H&amp;H up at Cartoon J.
Yep. So beautiful picture, perfect thing to kind of set the scenery for what we want to protect and make sure we have in Macon County for a long, long time.
Do you know how many acres are farmed in Macon County currently?
I believe it was about a little over 21,000, almost 22,000 acres.
So finally, got two more slides and recommendations I'm going to share all the time. Kind of a rough timeline we have. So, you know, increase awareness and support and education for those interested in transition planning. I cannot stress how crucial transition planning is in agriculture right now. There's a lot of folks who own farms. I said, the average farmer age is 60 years old who maybe, hey, my kids are going to take this over. I've got it figured out, but it's not in writing, right? Or maybe they didn't have kids, or maybe the kids have no interest in it. We gotta get that figured out. Conservation easements, it's a great tool. Puts it in an easement and says, hey, this has to be used for agriculture pretty much forever. And they get paid for the difference in value. It's a great opportunity for farmers to preserve their land, but also get some cash to invest into their operation. Support the Macon County Fair. Y'all have one of the last remaining agriculture fairs in the state of North Carolina. That's agriculture only by the way. That's awesome. I cannot stress how cool that is. Continue to support that, continue to take pride in that. That's a great thing. Once again, then that education at the K-12 levels. It's where our new farmers are going to come from. It's where that labor is going to be resolved, right? And then finally, protect farmland as a valuable resource. So right now, you do have voluntary agriculture districts. What we recommend is to set enrollment goals for that. If you set a number to it, it holds you accountable, or at least it does for me. So set a number that says, hey, this is how many farms we want. You know, this is how many farms we want in our voluntary agriculture districts. But also consider the adoption of an enhanced voluntary agriculture district. Gives the farmers a bit more protection, a bit more options, that kind of thing. And then the big one is develop a land lease recruitment program. This is a big project, but we really believe it will work here. And the reason for this is farmers need access to expand their operation, but also to start out. If you ask most farmers, hey, when I expanded my operation or when I started out, do I own my land? And a lot of times, unless it's family land, they'll tell you, no, I had to lease it from someone else. If you create a program where that's easily accessible, it's easy to connect people who want to farm to people who maybe are, you know, they want to get out of it, or it's sitting there and they're like, I don't know what to do with this, but I know I don't want it, you know, built or something similar. They can lease that land, start turning up and off it, get farmed, right? Could really be a great program. Finally, a timeline. I, I'm a planner by trade. And a lot of times when we get folks' timelines, we're like, hey, this has to be done in a year or two years or three years. And then life happens, right? Someone retires, someone gets sick, you know, things happen, right? So we kind of break this up in a little different way between short term, near term, and long term. Your short-term ones are things you can do, make two or less years. These are things you can do within a shorter time period, two or less years. Your near-term goals, you know, your three to five, that's kind of how we break it up. And then your long-term is five plus. So it gives you, we want to make sure your staff knows what to expect on how to implement these. It also allows you to have a little bit more flexibility where you're not sitting there saying, oh, it's year two, we got to get this part done. No, it's okay. It's okay. Maybe you implement one of these short-term and one of these near-term at the same time. Maybe it's the long-term and the near-term. It looks different in every community. And we wanted to make sure enough so that we could do a timeline that maybe could meet. Like I said, I like flexibility. I love planning, but planning doesn't do a whole lot of good if you can't implement a plan. So we want to make sure you have a good plan, an implement plan with a realistic timeline. And I will go back to that first picture. So we can see, page number 110. To see that beautiful H&amp;H farm, kind of beautiful scenery in Macon County and what y'all have to offer out here. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
How many chickens does someone have to own before they're considered a farmer in your study?
So that's self-reported by the Census of Agriculture. So I couldn't say without understanding what the Census of Agriculture metric is. And they're not always going to share that.
I was just thinking about the, the farmers, you know, I know of eight big farmers in this county.
Yes.
And there may be some more. And I'm talking about agriculture and livestock. So for those numbers to, you know, rise or stay steady and stuff like that, is how, how does that actually happen? How, what is considered a farmer, that was the biggest question.
Yeah, and I think it's anything for, for the Census of Act. They're going, you're going to say, hey, I reported farm income or agriculture income or something similar. And then, we're agriculture laws, right? And then they're going to send you a, send you a census in the mail. I perceived it myself. And you say, hey, here's why I raised, here's the number, here's how much I'm paid, you know, that kind of thing. So we all know the person who's lived in that neighborhood raising 10 or 12 hens with eggs. They're not going to get on that. But the person who's maybe, you know, even raising, there's a guy we interviewed, he's raising several hundred kind of free-range broilers. He's getting on that. His chickens are showing up on that.
I had spoken to several farmers over the last few days. And you're right, the number one killer for these farmers is labor.
Yep.
A lot of farmers are reducing the size of their crop production because based on whether they have someone to harvest his crops. I know one of the large apple growers in Hendersonville, they sold out about 200 acres of their apple orchard because of that. And then, you know, I asked him, what was the top five issues that were facing farmers today? And number one was labor. Number two is natural.
It's what?
Free trade agreement. They can't compete against Mexico. The regulations, which had come into the third biggest problem with producing farmers is the regulations, the government regulations. And it's ultimately causing these farmers, and you're right, they can't make a profit. They can't stay in business. And so they're having a very difficult time with competing against non-regulatory countries. It's bringing in their goods in the United States and they're competing against, against that, so.
Yes, sir. It's a great point. And that's why one of the recommendations we really make is focus on those local kind of food economies and those food, those kind of agriculture local ecosystems that can really build up some of these local farmers, right? Because if they can, you know, and that, maybe that's a change in culture on our end, too, right? Maybe the most convenient thing isn't, hey, we go to the Aldi's or the Eagles and buy our whatever. But, hey, how do we buy it from our local farmer, our local producer? Whether it's here in Macon, maybe it's over the county line in Jackson. I'm sure they won't hold it against you. But it's, you know, it's really, how do we, how do we change that mindset? How do we change that market? And I always tell folks, because, you know, I do a good bit of planning in the region and economic development as well. There's, there's no one coming to fix our problems. There's no one coming to save us. It's going to take our work on our end, right? And a roll of our sleeves to kind of figure some of these out. And that's to, to your point, that's, I think, where we are.
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pickens, stand up. I believe you've increased your farming space here in the last few months or so. You got any questions?
No, it's just the price of the farmland and what your set opinion at the sale.
Yeah.
And it's tough, but trying to keep a fourth, fifth generation farm going is what I'm doing.
Okay. Second question, don't forget your assistant. Okay. Second question. Don't forget your assistant. Did you introduce her?
I did.
You did? So, I went to sleep.
It's all right. We'll, we'll let you slide.
All right.
Alan's better at the talking, so I'm okay with him taking the lead for sure.
Appreciate y'all coming over the other day and being with us and sharing this. I see somebody.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm in the Macon County Culture Club, and it was a little while back that I think we were discussing, and I think it takes a flock of seventy-seven laying hands to fall so that you can sell fresh, farm fresh eggs. It's a classification, and it's one of those regulations you're mentioning that does constrict our local farms. That's exactly what you're talking about. And I don't know how you fix that, but I think it does require you to lay a flock of seventy-seven of those hands.
All right, let's go to nine C.
Are you through?
Unless y'all have any other questions. I'm here if you want me.
Be careful driving back.
I will. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
One thing.
I feel so fortunate that I am here tonight. Um, so, other information about what classifies farms, having a farm service number that you get with your MSA, and also self-reporting and making an annual over ten thousand dollars typically is where that customer can be due. But part of our work, which now lies, is working with the local Macon Food Council. And that is what created the new Macon Farm Market that is now being accepted right downtown. Additionally, part of what our food council is doing is creating a new policy act. And that is working with the local community efforts to identify some of the concerns that you just listed. Again, our produce box that we talked to y'all about, information is in my packet. We are buying food from our local farmers to give to people who need it. So, making another market avenue that I think will to accept what you're talking about to, to improve the lives of our farmers and to keep farmers farming.
Thank you very much. You may want to give her a card or something.
I'll have to. Well, one thing I will ask, just for Doug while he's on up here, we do ask that you adopt the plan tonight. It's been, I know it's been a lot of work on our end, I know it's been a lot of work on Doug's end. And while the North Carolina General Statute do require it, let's go a mile for, further, adopt the plan, let's say, hey, this is something we ask, hey, an elective body vote. Thank y'all for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Alan, I hope to be back out here soon again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, where we going? Doug?
Yes, sir.
Are we, uh, what's the, we're gonna make a recommendation to adopt this?
That, that's your prerogative, but yes, that's what we request.
I make a motion, we'll, I make a motion to adopt this. Since I've been, this is the second time I've been through the program, that we, I make a motion that we adopt a two thousand twenty-four farmland, farmland protection plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Antoine. Any more?
I just wanted to shout out to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mike Breedlove, and they gained a lot of public input from our local farmers, and we appreciate that.
We had a good group that came up, and everybody that we asked to be on the interview panel accepted and took time out of their day to do it. Tell you what, it was pretty eye-opening to hear some of their, some of their stories and what they're facing every day.
Farming is a huge part of our heritage, and appreciate what you did.
Doug, I have to ask, what are the comments to adopting this plan? I mean, it sounds really good, but sometimes when, uh...
I, I understand your, your, exactly, and, uh...
You know, I'd like, me personally, I would like to communicate this with, uh, some of the farmers that you've communicated with and get their take. It's easy for me. I, I dig digits for a living and, uh, but it's, so I'd really like to have some time to communicate and maybe, uh, vote on this at the next meeting.
That's, that's, that's your prerogative, and that's, that's up to the board, and that's fine. And it is, you know, it is, it's a long document. I understand that. It is hard to, you know, it took me a long time to get to it and everything. I think it's a good document. I think it's, it's nothing, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty, if you look at it, it's, I don't think there's anything tremendous controversial in it or anything like that. It's pretty not just, and it does, it does present a framework, you know, going forward to help, you know, kind of support agriculture in Macon County. And it also, one thing that I, I think I may have briefly mentioned before, but it helps us for future grants to get a better cost, better, excuse me, a smaller match rate on grants for like, for the county or anything. One of the, just a quick background, one of the things that wanted to brought this on was we had, had been approached by the Fair Board several years ago about the possibility of getting funding to try, try to look for grant funding for a new livestock arena. And match at that time, without, without this plan in place is, is for those, for ADFP grants are, is twenty-five percent. If, if this is adopted, it, there's a potential for, I think, as low as ten percent on some, depending on your county tier and everything. But it does, it does help with things like that. You know, it's a slice of the county house outlay, but, you know, none of that money is guaranteed. You don't know what's gonna happen in terms of grant funding, but it does, it does help with things like that. Those are some of the pros of it.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Riden, do we have two motions on the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think that...
We have one motion with a, we have a motion and a second.
I, I just ask out of the meeting, is that...
I didn't feel about that as far as like adoption or anything. Is there anything that you could add to what I just said?
You know, I think, I think the key thing is we, we got our due diligence and engaging with farmers. This is not something we did just from comfort of our office, Jared Rulton. This is something where we came and engaged and listened and heard what folks wanted to see. Reduces your match requirement, allows you to grow that partnership with ADFP for future agricultural projects. It also, most importantly, gives your staff a good framework of, hey, these are the, this is the direction we're going, and this is what we believe in as an organization, and this is where we're gonna go. So, from my perspective, you know, my name's on the plan. I wouldn't bring it to you if I thought it wasn't a good plan and a plan ready to be adopted.
Well, I certainly don't want to do anything that, that our local farmers don't agree with, and I haven't spoken to any of them about this plan. And I think I would like a little, a little more time to speak with, with the local farmers and make sure this is gonna benefit them and ultimately benefit this local community with local food crops and...
Absolutely. Completely understand.
Then I need to withdraw my motion. Just right now?
Um, you can vote, you all can vote on it, or you can withdraw it, either way.
Well, we just got it. I mean, I just happened to be forced not to be in the, in the meeting the other day with, with this information. He explained it to us, she did. I don't mind to withdraw mine and, and leave you a month or so to look at this. Good information inside of it.
Oh, I read the whole thing, but just, I mean, a lot of that's foreign to someone that's not producing agriculture for this county. And I, and like I said, I certainly don't want to, uh, do anything that could potentially hurt a farmer or not benefit the farmer.
So, we're tabling, I withdraw my motion for us to vote on tonight, and you make a motion that we table it for a month or until our next meeting? Will you make that as a motion?
There's no action needed.
No, there's no action needed.
Action is, okay. So, we're okay. We're okay. We'll act on it in a month, hopefully.
I'll, I'll be here. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
And please reach out if you think any questions between now and then. Doug has my contact information. Email me, call me, whatever works best for y'all. Let me try to answer any, no questions I can for y'all. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Nine C, Jack Morgan. Uh, Jack, uh, what's this one called?
To be noted on Natahala Library and Community Building update.
Everything's finished, all except for some furniture, the alarm system had a bad handle. We're able to replace that. Other than that, that's it.
Got one request. We still have money in that project, Lori?
We do.
If we put some old pictures of Natahala up in the community building?
They ask about that beauty club, asking about that, quite some time back, and asking to get some cautious, so we can...
At eight hundred bucks. They've got the pictures. They just need to buy the frames and do it. Everybody good with that? As long as it's within the budget. No grand opening, none of that, that's it.
They have the slide raising, the dedication.
I guess that served as grand opening.
I suppose it did.
Thank you for following through on that beautiful building. Community's happy with it. Very reasonable project, and I think a lot of that has to do with you, and I personally appreciate what you've done and the residents of Natahala do too. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
And I was talking about the Westbury Park splash pad.
Let's see, let me, uh, worth an oil.
Oh.
Let me, let me just see more. Okay, I see it right there. Um...
He's ten B, we can do it. Ten A.
Yeah, let's go on, yeah, then over this statement to structure there. Go ahead.
Gideon Curtis. Good to see you again. Yeah, my name's Kevin Hall, Noli Construction. Here to talk about requesting some additional funding for the Highland School addition and renovation project. We're requesting one hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to continue the effort for deep foundations design, procurement for potential deep foundation design, uh, design work for the steel structure for the addition. Uh, there's also some allowance money in there for additional investigation by some of the consultants that we've hired to further the investigation on potential soil and water contamination. Our intent was to deliver a full GMP package for your review in this meeting. We had a number of things that came to light late. There were a handful of additional scope requests. There was some, uh, reports and some findings from some testing that were performed. Again, we worked diligently to, to try and get it all together for your approval in this meeting, but there were a few puzzle pieces that we just couldn't fit in there and feel good about delivering you a number today. The one hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars would allow us to continue that effort to deliver and package that full GMP for your review and approval. That one hundred eighty-five thousand also allows us to maintain the schedule and the project timelines to complete the critical work at, at the school request for the media center, the pre-K classrooms, the Latin office spaces, as well as the addition, as we work through these last few items. And just briefly touch on those, there was some wood voltage scope that we were asked to, to work in the budget. There was some weight information on the existing fire alarm system that we are looking at pricing potential replacement of. That would allow for the additional or for the addition scope as well as for updating to meet current code requirements. There's also some testing that was performed for emergency responder radio signals. It was found that the signals in that building were less than are required, and it would require a booster system be installed. And then, one of the bigger items is finalizing sort of the design of the deep foundations in relation to potential soil contamination, water contamination, also in relation to removal of that existing fuel tank that sits below that four thousand square foot addition, two thousand of it's a actual footprint of it. So, a handful of things to work through. I feel confident that we can have that finalized before the next board meeting in September. But again, this one hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars would allow us to, to stay on track with the current project timeline and completion dates.
Is this considered a change order?
Uh, I think it would be considered a change order, and Ryan may speak to this, but, uh, I don't know that we would formalize a change order until we had the full GMP. We would just ask for the official approval or public approval from the board during this meeting.
Break this one hundred forty-five. I'm in the dirt work. I, I dig dirt, dug a lot of footers in Highland, a lot of big foundations in Swans. How you come to one hundred forty-five thousand dollars, and what is sheet piling procurement? Are you buying, what's a sheet piling?
So, sheet piling is just a form of shoring.
Is it what?
A form of shoring, like shores foundations.
You don't have trench boxes, any of that already bought? I mean, you don't possess those or ever doing your dirt work?
No, and part of it is the proximity of the storage tank to the exist, so another bit of information that came to light late was how the existing building footings were constructed. Uh, the existing footings were dug down to about approximately twelve feet, and then they, at that point, they had found some solid earth they could build off of. From that minus twelve feet, they, uh, they installed a stone base that was approximately twelve feet deep by six foot wide on the existing footing. The existing fuel tank is approximately eleven feet, nine feet actually from the face of that stone wall. In removing that tank, you're going to undermine the existing footings, and because of that stone construction, the concern of the deep foundation and their, their delegated design, their, their own engineer that would be designing the actual deep foundations is that during the removal of the tank, it may cause that stone to shift or, or move and undermine some of that existing footing. So, part of the plan is, what we've been talking through with the deep foundation company, is shoring around that tank to hold back the earth while we pull the tank out and backfill that, take the pit. In addition to that, the concern is while driving that sheet piling, it also may cause settlement in that stone foundation. So, really, the two-step process is first, we would install some underpinning under the footings, dig down, install the underpinning, pinning, have that in place, and then we would install the shoring around that storage tank in order to remove that storage tank and backfill that pit. And that's all leading up to the further deep foundation work, which is basically some helical piers, which would go down approximately thirty-five feet, and you would build off of those with concrete footings.
How are you gonna get helical through rock?
Through the rock.
How do you get helical piers through rock?
You talking about in terms of the existing footing?
The existing footing's twelve feet. How are you gonna get helical through thirty-five?
Talking with the deep foundation company, they didn't have any concern with helicals going through the rock. Uh, the only concern was as you go through that rock, you may not get the torque because you're losing some of that torque from that design. I mean, that's still, we're still furthering the conversation, and that's part of what this one hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars would allow us to do is actually pull it, because right now their engineer is just giving them ideas, best guesses, but they have not, they've not released their engineer. Their engineer's not on board to finalize any kind of design. So, that's what this, this dollar figure would allow us to do is finalize that.
So, the forty thousand for the storage tank is just the consulting? That's not, that didn't include actual removal?
That does not include removal. No, that's, that's...
What size tank are you talking about?
Ten thousand gallons.
And how deep is that? What's the bottom of that?
We're, we're guessing approximately eleven feet. It's hard to tell. We've, we've done some radar, uh, some GVR, uh, GVS radar, uh, testing to see how deep it is, but their, their systems don't go that deep. But based on the tank size and the depth to top of tank, we're, we're assuming about eleven feet below current record.
The tank's empty now.
Not to my, no, just not. Tracy, there is, yeah, there'll be some fuel that we'll have to pump out and before we move to clean it, go through the full tank closure process.
Is it still being used?
Currently, it will be.
Well, the borders are not fired now, but they will be first in September.
And we're actually in the process of switching that fuel type over from the diesel fuel that's in that tank now to where we're, we put in fuel lines. We actually poured the pad today for the new propane tanks. The tanks will probably be set sometime next week, and then the burners are coming in. Supposed to ship second week in September, so we're in the process of switching those over so that we can remove the tank when it comes time for that.
It just seems like some of these studies would be conducted before we ever come up with a plan of design of any structure. We're doing the same thing at the... We're doing the same thing at the Red Park. With the Red Park, we wanted a study to see if we could even do what we planned to do out there. And it seems like that's, we're going at this thing backwards. We have an addition and everything designed and we don't even know if we can actually put it there. My concern with Highland School is, at this point, is Highland School even worthy of spending ten million dollars? Because I've had lots of reports of bad things at Highland School. And so I know at East Franklin School, we've done it, supposedly done a study that it can't be renovated or additions added to it. And so I'm thinking tiles are popping up in the east, in the elementary wing of Highland School because the moisture that's coming through there, that is a swamp. And if there's, is there any early indication that that tank has jeopardized? Because if it is, that entire area back there is a swamp. And so that entire area that we're talking about, the soccer field, is going to be contaminated. And so we're opening up a huge can of worms through this process. I don't know what the answer is. I love Highland School, I love Franklin High School, and all schools in Mayfair County. But the taxpayers of this county, there is a limit. You heard all these people talking tonight about food and how important it is for food boxes and all this because our citizens are struggling. But we can't just keep throwing money at all these projects without knowing what the final cost is going to be. And forty thousand dollars to do a study on removal of a tank, seems to me like that would have been one of the first things that we would have discussed. There's an oil tank there. How big is it, how deep is it, is it, has it been leaking in the past? Because that's a whole new ballgame. And as much as I know, the additions and everything to Highland School is needed. But we're not on unlimited funds to keep throwing these projects with the unknown. So, I don't.
I guess a couple of other questions I have is, we have local engineers that do this every day in Highlands. People that are from the plateau. You know, I mean, Highlands is an environment of its own. And I just feel like, spoke with local consultants, I feel like they probably designed those buildings, they probably know where that tank is. But nonetheless, we've got an environmental issue that I don't think this board can deny. That tank more or less has to come out and think you have to go propane or raise that tank out of the ground, it's not gonna, that tank's not gonna heal itself. I feel like no matter what happens, we have to get that tank out of there. I guess I was more or less expecting you guys tonight to come up with a GMP where we can kind of talk about this whole project and, you know, state it's a.
Right, and I mean, we do have some information about the, I mean, we did test the dirt. It came back as there wasn't a drawing leakage in the vicinity of the tank. In terms of NCDQ, it came under actionable levels, so there's no action required, there's no remediation required. The concern is that with the high groundwater table there, the levels that are required for remediation are much lower when it comes to water testing. And in order to backfill the tank pit, in order to put the foundations in, in order to do the other deep foundations, I mean, we're likely gonna have to do a lot of de-watering. And another bit of information that we don't know and that we're trying to work through through this process is figuring out what the rate of recharge is of that groundwater. So say you start pumping out water, whether it's into the back of the creek, which would take its own slew of permeating through DQ, or if we're pumping into a frac tank, if that, if that rate of recharge is two gallons a minute, it's not awful. If it's twenty gallons a minute, that, the costs start to become exorbitant. So part of that is getting the Geotech Kessel to confirm what kind of water we're going to encounter if we do need to de-water. Part of this other, the forty thousand is to do some further water testing of that groundwater and see if we're at levels that are above actionable levels and require some sort of remediation in the eyes of NCDQ. The only downfall of that is once you do test, it is a regulatory requirement if it's over actionable levels to report to them. And then there is a remediation plan that has to be followed and coordinated with that agency.
Do you have, does this cost include measuring the water replacement rate?
The Geotech has been directly through Mayfair County. I think that we could cover the cost in that forty thousand though.
Of the water, not the Geotech, the actual replacement of the water? Would you know if it's two gallons a minute or twenty gallons a minute with this hundred eighty thousand?
Well, that, so the Geotech Kessel was originally hired through, directly through Mayfair County. So there's a couple, a handful of different consultants. Terricon is the environmental consultant, they're the ones that tested the soil. They'd be the ones that would test the water for contamination. Kessel, the Geotech engineer is the one that came out and did bore, he's determined the capacity of the soil and what kind of foundations would be required. And that's why we're at the point of looking at deep foundations and shoring and things of those natures. So Kessel would be the one that would need to test for the water, I mean, I, yes.
I guess my question will be a little more direct, and I'm sorry, I think I'm confusing here. Does this cost tell us the refreshment rate of the water at the bottom of that pit?
It can, yes.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't want.
The one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, does that, I think we talked about this before, will that be, when the GMP is provided, will that cost then be accounted for and shown that, and already be? So in other words, it's gonna come out, the GMP will be lower because that one hundred eighty-five thousand will already be, we'll already pay for it, is that correct? So we'll see that?
Right, yeah, it is, it will be a part of the GMP.
And show as a deduction.
Right, yeah, I mean, they're, depending on what the other costs that come in, depending on what the test results are for the investigation.
The one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars that we're discussing here tonight, that is needed, will be, we will get credit for that back in the GMP.
Yeah, it'll end up being a part of the GMP, right, correct. Yeah, I mean, some of this work, like the deep foundations and the steel design, the potential procurement of the sheet piles, all that is already factored into the GMP.
Has Jack been around already?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Question.
Mr. Kears, have you been up there, Jack? Have you seen, have you been involved in any of this?
Not the testing.
Or Tracy?
No. Yeah, just the general conversations that we've all had, yeah. So I don't know, I don't know.
You're dealing with a piece of property that sold in Franklin High School.
Yep.
And we're gonna tear down everything in Franklin High School, still time to patch this thing up in Highlands. Going to be some, I didn't vote for the project, so I can't vote for this, but anyway, here's Mr. Chairman.
I don't think we can go forward if we don't have this one hundred eighty-five thousand. And I'm not for the, the project to just to stop. So I think we need to move on with your request. And hey, these things happen. And these, I think, along, and I'm not trying to compare things, but along with Carol Daniels, we had to do a summer plan of what it would cost. And so, to me, now, you're doing a plan kind of to start a school, but you run into these factors here that are unknown. So I don't think we can ignore it or the project stops, right?
We would not be able to meet the schedule timelines that the school needs us to if we do not have resists tonight.
I mean, ballpark, where are we at our GMP right now? Any idea, just plus or minus ten percent?
With the original scope, what we originally included, from the GMP numbers that we talked about before, we are under budget. But some of the scopes and some of this unknown information is not included in that. And we're not, the range is just too high to give you a comfortable number, you have to guess.
What am I, if I make a motion, am I making it for one hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars or forty thousand? I lost the forty thousand.
Hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Which includes the forty thousand.
Correct, yes. So total is one hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
And that number is not additional to where we, when you said we were under budget, or that is additional to?
That's, that's part of that, that under budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Shields?
Yes, ma'am.
And if a, if a motion is made to approve, we would also need a budget amendment from general fund balance for the eighty-five five as part of that motion. Because of course, this money is not currently appropriated.
Mr. Rollins, want your feedback?
As always, Mr. Shields, I will never go against the finance district.
Can you, I'm slow at writing, can you put that in some kind of motion for me?
I guess it would be a motion to approve a budget amendment for one hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars from general fund balance to move forward with this scope of work as presented tonight by Vanoy Construction.
Amen. We all heard the motion, would you like to have it read again? I'd like to make a motion that we continue with the project in Highlands and good luck. Is there a second, is there a second to that? I made the motion. We're thinking.
I mean, I feel like we have to talk about the tank, but I guess I'm a little bit, I'm out of order right now. Motion on the floor.
Uh, we, you just second it, you know, we'll go to the discussion. We can handle it.
It's gonna be out of order. I, I feel like we have local engineers that do this every single day, right down the road. There've been numerous projects right around that same area. And I feel like there's people that do this every single day, and Jack's been involved in a lot of these, Tracy right there. I feel like I was expecting this all, last, a few months ago, we put all this money in place to come back with a GMP, right? So now you come back again and we're expecting a GMP and you say, I need one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars more. I support this project, I support getting that tank out of there. The tank needs to come out of there, it needs to come out of there next week. I feel like I've kind of got a little trust thing right now, and nothing personal with you, but I'm expecting a GMP and now you come back for one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars more to do more exploring that we still don't know about. And I just feel like I trust Jack and Tracy and I wouldn't mind to see you guys consult one of our local engineers and see what they have to say. Two of them do it every day, three of them, right there in Highlands. And they're right down the road, I mean, I'm sure they'll help you.
Not yet, including the conversation at all?
I just feel like you have people from down east that have no clue what this environment is. And you have people that design it every day and they deal with the watering. I mean, they just built houses on Harris Lake right there, a lot of de-watering right there, but I don't know, I feel like the tank needs to come out. I know this project needs to continue, I support the project, I just, I'm a little reluctant because I don't really feel like you guys held up your end of the bargain, there's nothing personal, but I was expecting a GMP. And now you want one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars more.
If I could try and clarify here, our full intention was to bring the GMP to you with the information and with some of the stuff that's to light. And to be honest with you, we typically don't do environmental testing. Typically, that's handled by other parties. We were trying to keep this process moving forward, so Kevin took Bull Eye Horns and engaged someone. And these individuals, Terricon, do have experience working up here. They're licensed, they're certified, they're educated. I have full faith in their abilities. And our point, in order for us to bring you the GMP as this information came to light, we notified this, we've red flagged this as a potential issue, right? And so we wanted to try and get this resolved. And so at the time you were getting this resolved and this information we found has brought to light that there are potential concerns. And we don't have the time in order to have gone through all that, it takes. We've probably got ten people on a call tomorrow morning at nine o'clock to discuss, because that's how many people this touches between the complications of these, the foundations, the soil, the contamination, the pit, the deep foundations, all these parts and pieces. So we're trying to brainstorm this, bring you the best, most economical and time-sensitive solution to the table. And that takes some time, some extra time that was not anticipated based on what we knew back then. With this one hundred eighty-five thousand, it's basically a stopgap to bridge the gap and continue the potential if the project further moves forward after we bring additional information, to maintain the schedule of opening next fall. We don't have to approve this. And if we can go through and go through the exercise of reevaluating all this information and then bring you the GMP, it would just delay that fall opening next year. And so I, you know.
That's better explanation, I appreciate that.
No, I mean, Kevin, I mean, he's been working his rear end all the time to explain all this. And he's been, I mean, you can tell the detail he has and, and he's tried to take Bull Eye Horns and pushes, and he's, he's kept focusing the know-how of what we're doing to progress. We're just, we're trying to give you the right product, and if we brought you a GMP today that would a hundred percent cover the unknown, we're still filtering, you kick it out first. And we don't want to do that, don't feel comfortable, we don't want to bring you a scary number without going through the fourteen.
I mean, me personally, and I know it's time-sensitive for Highlands and the whole project, but looking at a fifty-year project right here, and if it takes six months to go in there and do the proper due diligence that we already paid for, I can live with that. But I'm one person on twenty percent, I feel like, you know, we have you under contract to more or less do this right now. And I'm a contract guy.
Should I explain about the tank a little bit before y'all?
The tank's a serious issue, yeah.
The background on that. The tank is a nineteen seventy model tank.
Come on up to the mic, thank you.
Nineteen seventy model tank, and it's ten thousand gallons, it is approximately eleven feet to the bottom of the tank, it's how we measure the fuel with a twelve-foot stick. It used to sit above ground behind where the shop is, used to be. Then in nineteen ninety-four, when we built that building, then they buried that tank. So we have reason to believe, obviously it's the original tank, that it was above-ground tank, single wall, not double wall. This is the first year that I have picked up water into my tank that the boilers were not fired this year, this past winter. We had to pump that out, had twenty-five gallons of water in the tank. So, but it was the first year that I have seen it. So I think that it is very recent leakage if we're having that. Obviously, it's thin, the tank would be thin if that be the problem. I didn't know about it, so I actually blamed my fuel supplier at first because I didn't think we had a problem. But now as we investigate, I think that we do have a problem with being a thin, single-wall tank. So that's where we're at with that. You know, we took a above-ground tank during construction and buried it. And then it actually floated up because of the, because of groundwater up there, you know, how tanks will float because you're dead without a septic system. And then they had to go in with ties and tie it back down a dead end. So that's where we're at with that tank, that's been a, been a long time coming, you know, but, but if we know about contamination now and we don't get it out, then we have to get that, that's it.
And Tracy, what about when you fire the boilers back up for the fall school season?
Well, we got that twenty-five gallons of, twenty-five inches of water off of the, off the tank last, last fall. So we're thinking it would, you know, I can, I can fire them for the two weeks, make sure that we're bled, it all washes through the lines. And then they have new burners in second week in September. The line is already put in, the LP lines is already there, and they're ready to do the transformation from the, from the diesel fuel into the LP in another month. So I hope we'll be fine there, even if I can just, if I don't have enough fuel to run both. So I hope we'll be fine there, even if I can just, if, if, if I don't have enough fuel to run both boards, if I'm picking up too much water, I can run one. And run one board, and then, you know, cause it won't be that cold, we don't have to fire both of them.
You're getting water in that tank, Tracy. Uh, once it's gonna have, I mean, it's there.
Sure is.
And I've removed quite a few storage, underground storage tanks in Highlands. Some permits, some not permitted for removal. But I'd get that thing pumped out quick, pronto, and fill it up with, uh, oil, dry cat litter, some absorbent to keep any more from.
Well, I can't, well, I can't do that because I still have the risk of firing, I gotta fire my boards the first two weeks of September. What if the LP, the burners don't come in? So see, I'm.
Can you do an above-ground five-hundred gallon tank?
Yeah, do anything with money.
What was the school budget issue for, seventy million?
How much do you break?
Have you handled it? I don't know, but if, if that thing, if you're, if it's leaking, if you're getting water infiltration into that tank, it's leaking. And it'll, as long as it's empty, water will come into the tank. If you fill it with fuel, it'll go out of the tank.
Sure.
The pressure, the, the, often. And if you've got a fuel leak there in the middle, right in the middle of Highlands, I'd get whatever I had to do. I mean, there needs, this needs, this is, this is, this is worse than sewer system in that haywire, I can tell you that.
So, uh, there's no doubt. I mean, this is a serious issue and, um, that tank needs to be, to be addressed, um, ASAP.
You boys are into, it was four to one vote last month, so you boys are into it if you waste.
If I could reiterate, reiterate the thing, and if I, again, we're, right, we're trying to figure and dive into this thing more. As Kevin said before, before everything goes haywire, uh, the findings they did have, they're unactionable right now. So I, I don't want you to think that there's a huge catastrophe going on right now as, as we try to dive into this deeper. But you're, but you're correct about, sir, Mr. Commissioner, about wanting to do precautionary things that does not.
Two things real quick that jump out at me. Somebody had to dig that out to put the tank in. They'd already undercut that. There's no telling what damage happened to the foundation whenever they put that in. And then number two, what if, uh, throwing it out there, you pump everything out like Mr. Hickman says, clean it. Can you not fill it with like a slurry or some kind of product and just more or less leave it so you don't abandon it? You know what I mean? Is that, is that an option or is that not an option?
It is one, environmental, and two, structural, and that is part of the conversation we're gonna have tomorrow with our group of consultants, LS3P. I mean, we've got LS3P, structural engineer, environmental engineer, geotech, deep foundations, grading contractor. We're all gonna be on the same call and work through what, what the most economical and best option to take this tank out or leave it in place, if that is an option. I know TerraCon was looking into that possibility. Um, it may involve, um, bridging that tank with additional concrete or foundations or possibly filling what a flow will fill and, and working from there. So that is part of the conversation.
Good conversation.
I wanna just a little bit clarify part of this, and there's really two pieces of the, of the ask today. One is the hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. That is work that was in our estimated budgets that were presented to you back in May. This was all work that was earmarked as the potential for needing to go early, which is the ask today, that it go early, the design work for deep foundations, the sheet piling and structural steel design. Those are all things that were in the original budget that we presented to you, um, in May. And so it is taking that chunk of money that's already been accounted for and moving it into a column on its own to allow it to move forward to maintain the schedule. The forty thousand dollars is the additional exploration work that's required to resolve the answer around the tank to the best value of the project. And so I think that there's, um, putting that a little bit into perspective that as the bids came in for the, the GMP, um, that we are building or that really Bantoy is building, and we're trending on budget and under budget with those costs, that hundred and forty-five thousand dollars was part of that budget estimating that Bantoy did in preparation for taking bids for the GMP. And so we're still, um, we're not busting out at the seams in terms of the budget work that's been presented to you in previous discussions earlier and back, have been back in the spring.
So Emily, why wasn't this, uh, money asked for when you were asking for, uh, money for summer work? If it was already, if, if it's something that we knew we had to do, why wasn't it, uh?
At the time, based on the schedule and based on the timing of when we were gonna be bidding the project, we were expecting that deep foundations work and the steel design could be incorporated into the main presentation of the GMP. And the forty thousand dollars toward the work, um, to resolve the issues around the tank were, uh, some of money has already been requested as part of the early work that was approved back in May to begin to compile the, the consultants necessary and to begin the assessment work, the evaluations that have already taken place to help us eliminate this information. So that forty thousand dollars was an unknown number until we got the first round of feedback. We wouldn't need the hun, the forty thousand dollars if we hadn't identified any kind of contamination or concerns around, uh, around the tank with the first round of investigation that happened earlier in the summer.
So you anticipated the hundred and forty-five thousand in the actual scope of the project originally?
Yes, because we knew we had deep foundations and we knew we had structural steel, and we knew that we were gonna have some of that work.
Right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this time I'd like to make a motion that we do a budget amendment, um, uh, for a hundred and eighty-five thousand to and so a hundred, um, for Highland School project to move.
I'm sorry, we already have a motion on the floor.
Oh, did you make that motion? Oh, that's right, we went out of order. I second Mr. Chairman's motion.
Thank you.
Any, uh, further discussion?
We need to have all commissioners vote on all issues. It's a present, so we need to wait for Mr. Hickman now to come back.
Oh. Well, we know what that's gonna be. So chalk it up.
Be nice. Let's see, agree to disagree and respectful management.
We already said it. He already said it. There, Chairman.
I understand that. You wanna make a check on it?
Oh, he went to Little Police.
I didn't know he got sick.
It's probably, probably the great pizza. There he is. We're waiting on you, sir.
Can you go over the motion again now? I said you helped me out the first time.
I already stayed in my position. I didn't support the project.
Yeah, we understand that. We wanted your vote in, yea or nay?
Nay.
Well, but we ain't got that far yet.
Good, we forgot it, so now we just need to call it to the vote, I think.
So any further discussions? If not, all, is everybody aware of what we're voting on?
Yeah. I'm not aware who made the motion and seconded it, but that's.
Well, I made the motion. He got seconded. All right, all in, let's see, we vote here, raise your hand if you're in agreement of the motion, hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred budget amendment from general fund balance to move forward with this work as presented by Bantoy Construction.
Comprendi?
All right, so we have.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, so we, you had to vote for, all right, we're in favor, so all in. All opposed?
Okay, I just checking, just making sure you understood what the motion was.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, all in agreement. Raise your hand. Is that what we're doing?
All opposed.
All opposed.
Have we got it? What was the agreement?
Four?
Yeah.
Okay, all opposed. Not me. Raise your hand. It's getting six hour, uh, three hours and something on my rear.
All opposed.
All opposed.
All raise your hand again.
I just voted one time on every.
Today you get to vote more than one.
Yeah.
You're in the negative. Paul voted in the negative. Okay, we're good.
Forty-one.
Okay.
All right. Do you gentlemen understand? We're moving forward. All right. Any further question with Bantoy?
T and B.
T and B. All right, let's see, Brother Jack, Morgan.
Back in April, ask you for some money to build a well down in West Park, probably with leading money family down Park Hills. We've got a very good well down there, about fifty-five gallons per minute. That's enough water. It's good in the ice cold. And again, in your package, you should have a spreadsheet about the cost to complete that project. And the estimate, this will provide all necessary materials, labor, and these all items are costing from everybody. This is costing markets. This estimate will include a well pump producing forty gallons per minute outflow, a pipe and wiring to the well, wellhead attachments, pressure tank, concrete slab to well, the well cover, lock nut, underground wire conduit and pipe from the well to our existing building. We're using conduit and a sleeve pipe, so our best we ever have to replace will not be to dig the park up again. We'll have to build a new electric service at the building. It will include some interior lighting and receptacles and a control panel for the three-wire pump system. And also a vi, violent water system capable of treating the forty-gallon per minute flows. We actually need thirty more to keep it running, but it will treat up to forty gallons. Not a cheap thing. And a caster water filter. We're also gonna rebuild the water feature manifold, and we have to replace three effective cold noise. And that's this, there's eight, I explained the first time. We also have to replace a portion of the sidewalk that we had to move, remove between the well and our building. We're just gonna replace that section and put some bricks, uh, that had names on them. There's a little plaque thing there that's been destroyed over the years that had the names of the people that had donated to build that splice pad to begin with. We'd like to incorporate them back in that section of sidewalk replacement. That covers that. Uh, also money for a park bench for Crane Brothers Well Building family, as they did nine thousand dollars worth of well building and no additional cost. It's the least we can do, I think. And I ask if you approve of this request, uh, twenty thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars that you allow me to continue to see the cost that happens.
Motion approved, Jack.
Second.
How much?
Would you say twenty thousand four hundred?
He asked for some contingency on top of it, though.
Ten percent contingency?
How much you think we need, Jack?
Uh, ten percent ought to be gracious.
Twenty-two thousand?
Four, four seven.
Twenty-two, four, we'll have to make it twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand? From general fund contingency is what I would recommend. You've got three hundred nine, eight, three hundred eighty-nine thousand in contingency. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What'd you say the water bill was before you started this project?
Uh, quite a bit last month, it's four thousand dollars. Now we found another leak. Uh, that's the reason the parks, this splice pad had, had, uh, enclosed recently because of that. And I was gonna wait till after the feature closed in September to do this work, but it's closed anyway, so I, I would ask that we go ahead and do it.
School's back anymore? It's after best you could do for us, Jack.
Best I could do for you.
Call, call vote.
That's not why I'm saying come home.
Speed it up, we'll do it.
Uh, we've had a motion, seconded discussion, all in favor, uh, twenty thousand dollars towards the Wesley Playground Project come down to general fund?
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
Twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-two thousand budget amendment from general fund contingency. That's the motion, correct?
That's the motion, yes, yeah.
Okay.
And we've cussed it, discussed it, so the vote, all in agreement?
Yes.
How much?
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Let's see, who we at now? Let's see, um, I see Mr. Coppers, I see Bobby McCollum. We're gonna be discussing the consideration, I see, potential sale or transfer of the ownership of Cowie School. Please position yourself to where you can hear it, what we say or whatever's, whatever's coming up here. And I believe it's by our legal counsel has got the word. If you just position yourself where you can hear what, what we're saying.
Okay, so there are basically the six different options, um, and I think that those options are presented in the agenda. Things that you consider, um, to do with this property, uh, we can. So I just, I, I guess it's in your discretion to, um, to decide what you wanna do.
Okay, Mr. Coppers and I, we've talked, and Mr. McCollum have talked. I believe there was a one A that you were interested in presenting. Is that right or wrong or a d? That would be a one A.
Well, yeah, you call it one A, you call it six A, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Uh, what we were, what we were hoping to do, we've talked around, obviously, uh, I think that the, uh, the end result is, is, is we all want the same thing, I think. Uh, what we had hoped was that we might be able to extend the current contract for two or three years at board's discretion. And at that time, that will be the end of the road in all likelihood. We don't want to make the other. We're close, we're very close. It's always been our desire to, and I think Bob could probably talk to us better than me, but it's always been the desire of the board to, for, for the nonprofit to take the school, if, if that worked out, if we could do that. We think we've got a pretty good product out there and we'd, we'd like to, like to keep it going. We provide a lot of, a lot of services to the county, a lot of recreation, that kind of stuff. But that was, that's true, what I was looking at. It's, it's, the board is discussing, I'm, I'm way out of base here because the board's not here. You're looking at two of us. Uh, but, but that's been the discussion up until now, if that helps.
Can I say one other thing? Uh, Mr. Counselor, I don't believe this is up for, why are we talking about it now? It's not up till April, is it?
Um, it was, it was put on, um, upper discussion, um, meeting or two ago. And so I was directed by the board to advise what the options were. So I submitted the email with the options. So you can table it, you can, it's up to y'all.
When is the lease due? April twenty-five?
Yeah, the current lease expires April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five.
And we're talking about it on eight thirteen twenty-fourth.
The reason it came up is the budget session every year. See, when this thing, and I think, well, he might've been on the board of commissioners with his right of bill, when this, it's thirteen years ago, whenever.
Well, thirteen years, yeah.
It was for three years, the county would subsidize the, uh, Kelly Heritage Center for sixty thou, with sixty thousand dollars.
It's not anymore, but it was when it started, yeah.
Pardon?
I don't think it's sixty thousand anymore.
Oh, no, but after, after, after three years, it would be self-sustaining. And, and it has never been self-sustaining. So I don't know, I think we were having a discussion about one year it'd be twenty thousand, next year it's thirty thousand, it's zero. And you got a bunch of money, how much did y'all get from the state?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty?
A one-time deal, yeah.
Yeah, one-time deal. And so at some point, do you continually fund something that was started for three years? Or do you, I mean, it just needs to be cleaned up, however, whatever's the best way to clean it up.
Well, let me comment on that, is that, uh, at the time the school was started, that was the plan. The schools also started up on the heels of the economic downturn that we saw in two thousand and seven, eight and nine. And at that time charitable giving crashed, uh, for all organizations, churches, nonprofits, everybody. So we was very slow to recover, uh, the giving level there. Everybody gave for a number of years. Also, the best-laid plans, mice and men, uh, don't always work out. Uh, y'all have had several discussions here already. Things change over the course of time. Uh, we're able to raise all of the grant money for programming that we have people begging us to apply for some grants, uh, because they know the job that we do. What we have trouble raising is overhead administrative funds, which are not included, uh, in grants more than, uh, more than four, five percent sometimes. And so we have had to, to have the county, uh, give us a little help along the way. Currently, for the last several years, uh, we've only. Currently, for the last several years, uh, we've only been in the budget for the lights and the gas. Essentially, you're, you're paying for our lights and gas. It's, is, and there's some maintenance money that has been geared towards the school, but you, you do still own the building. Some of that's expected. We want to put ourselves in a position to acquire the school. We just want to make sure that it's done in a way that doesn't jeopardize future operations of the school and put us in peril of not being able to continue to function. And, and I would specifically ask that no hasty decisions be made because of the number of individuals and livelihoods that are associated with the school that, that whatever decision you make are going to affect in the future. Along those lines, what I had prepared here tonight was to extend an invitation to each of you so that you better understand the full scope of what we do, how we do it, how the money is spent, what we have plans for in the future, to invite you individually to set, to give us a call. We'll give you a tour, answer all your questions. We'd especially like if you would do it collectively. We'd also invite you to hold, uh, one of your future board meetings at the school. So that everyone, media and, and people that haven't had a chance to come there and see the good things that we do in action and hold a formal meeting there. Other than that, I'll try and answer any questions.
The other thing we wanted to do was thank you for all the support we've had in the past. We certainly recognize we wouldn't be as close to where we are to achieving that goal if it wasn't for the county. So we understand that and we genuinely appreciate it. I think, though, if you haven't been out there in three or four years, it's big changes. There's a lot more out there, a lot more going on than there were even three years ago. And it is, it is one of the few recreational slash facilities of recreation in the north end of the county. Just for thought, that's, that's all there is. So you're, you're not just, you're not just keeping the school afloat. You're, you're providing services to the people in the north end of the county that, that may not be close enough to go play basketball at Carpenters. And by the way, that basketball court that got paid there, we paid for it, you didn't, so.
Just a good conversation. I feel like, yeah, I would support, I wouldn't say gifting, but more or less for a dollar, kind of doing like we're doing with the Pine Grove Schoolhouse. But you need time to, you know, it's like, can you give us an example of some of the cost and kind of, you know, maybe what the hesitation is right there?
We're actually working, we realized when the subject came up several months ago in general discussion. Here, uh, we have our finance person and we, we have a board meeting dedicated to coming up with exactly the information that you're asking for. This is kind of new to us, we're, we're thankful to be included in the conversation. And we'll get that to you and give you some idea of what we're looking at financially and, and time-wise to ensure the continuity of the school.
Thanks for sticking around.
Can you, uh, can you provide that information at our September meeting? Or is that too, we'll give her a shot?
I believe we can, yes. We've, we've actually been working on it for a little bit of time. And if you want it September, we'll do everything we can do to get it to you September. If it looks like your kids can't get there from here, we'll communicate with you, but we'll get it to you if possible.
Okay, so we just tabled the discussion. We'll just table the discussion and ask you to come back in September with as much information you can give to us so we can make a decision in regard to what you're presenting? And if you're, and you're saying if that comes impossible, we go for October. Is that right?
Uh, we definitely make it by October, but September.
Okay, it's still in April, I, my mind, it's still, but I, I want to get it done, get it out, get it off your list.
Absolutely. Well, I certainly understand. You don't want to kick anything down the road if you don't have to. Been there, done that, don't have a T-shirt, but, uh, thank you very much for, uh, for letting us talk and, and, and listen to what we have.
We don't have time to mention all that, right?
No, by the way, if you haven't come out to Cowie School for a fourth grader day, yeah, let's check it out, it's something to see.
Appreciate what you do. Yes? Mr. Ridenour, anything else you need to add to that or? Uh-oh, the next one's mine. Okay, uh, ten, ten D. Ten D is discussion regarding soil erosion and sedimentation ordinance, Commissioner Gary Shields. Josh Young is our liaison to the, start to say erosion board, to the planning board. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to him for his, um, questions or for his, uh, report.
Guess this is what a lot of us have been waiting for for a couple weeks. First off, I want to say thanks for sticking around. Thanks for all the time, I've been, plenty of emails, a lot of discussion. And I feel like I just don't want to jump right into it, but there's no malicious intent here. I don't like sediment in our creeks either. I don't want sediment in our creeks. To be honest with you, there's nothing I like more than to drop a fly into a little hole and catch a speckle trout and eat the whole fish, head and tail included. You know, that's the way I was brought up. I, I'm not here to fill our rivers full of creeks. But I feel like when I'm out here, boots on the ground, you see problems, you see issues. And we can hide from them, we can hit them right in the head. But the issues, some of these issues that I've brought up over time, so we can pretty much encourage everybody who goes down the permit office and say they're filling up a permit for less than a half an acre. That's pretty much the way it is. You don't, you don't say it's more than a half an acre because you have to go, I guess a lot of you guys already know this, and you have to go and file for a set of engineered erosion control plans. I don't make any extra money. The contractor doesn't make any extra money on that set of plant that actually, I'm sorry, we do make extra money. We, we do on erosion, engineered erosion control plans. Um, it's a burden to the taxpayer, it's a burden to the, to the homeowner. And going over some of this right here, I feel like most of our home sites in these mountains, they're over a half an acre. Agree or disagree, whenever you go to build a road on a fifteen, twenty-degree slope, you have to clear fifty, sixty feet to be able to put a twelve, fifteen-foot road in. You have to strip the soil, strip the stumps. Time you put in a septic system and a well and a decent home path you can walk around, you have a certain half an acre. But drive around here and look, none of those sites have engineered erosion control plans. Very few of them do. So I feel like we're not enforcing those. And the real issue that I see here isn't the licensed contractors that are performing these tasks, it's the rental operations. Where anybody can go down here and rent a backhoe, go dig whatever they want to dig, and they go buy some janky little wooden stakes and they kind of halfway do a silt fence that isn't up to par. You know, we've done sites well, well less than a half an acre that have six runs of wired-back silt fence. And I feel like that's a responsibility of the contractor. And listen, that's, that's part of enforcement that we've talked about before, isn't getting enforced. But I want to bring up other issues that, you know, I feel like are pertinent to this conversation. And I'm just talking about my garden. I live on Hickory Hill and I love to garden. I grow the garden a lot bigger than I need to grow, but it's still well less than a quarter of an acre. And you plow a garden in spring, wait is time of the year, about here's the spring. They told us there's twenty-one thousand acres of farmland. One heavy rain event in spring, my tops on my gardens laying down the middle of the road. I'm sure a lot of you have gardens. Look around, go up Hickory Hill, Clark's Chapel. One heavy rain event on a garden on some bottom land, I support farming. But there's more erosion weep's out of my garden than our construction sites, as long as it's done right. I feel like what's happening right now is, yeah, we're in the mountains. And to everyone that said it, they're right, we're not in the flatlands. But we're not the only ones in the mountains. State of North Carolina has a set of codes that more or less we abide by. There's a third of the state in the mountain region. And we're the only county that I'm aware of that has these guidelines. And I want to say thank you. I mean, you guys have put these in, you're passionate about what you've done. There's no hurt feelings here and I appreciate you sticking around. I mean, this has been a, you know, it's, it's been a debate that a lot of us have put a lot of time into over the past few months and, and I appreciate that, I appreciate you guys being here. So I hope we can just respectfully agree to disagree. There's five men on this board, I feel the way I feel. I had a figure of nothing I wanted to bring up right here, but, but really I think that's more or less what I had to say. I feel like what's happening is we're enticing our contractors to go to the permit office and no matter what happens, you say less than a half an acre. And that's what's happening right now. So it is what it is, Jack, you can voice your opinion if that's not the case, but it's what I've seen and, uh, again, I do appreciate your time. And I don't want silt in our creeks either, I really don't. I think the county needs to do a better job of portioning, portioning that.
I'm in a meeting, I'll call you back. Uh, I'm here. I thought a person had passed away. And I just want to make sure that the person hadn't passed away. And that person hasn't, he's in the rest home making that right down the street. And he's in that condition, so I, I need to check that. Thank you. Now, there we go. Good job. Appreciate you hanging around there, Bill and all of you, Mr. Woodman. I guess we're in a situation now where we have to make a motion regarding to the, opposed amendment to the Mackin County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. And as, uh,
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the changes as presented by the planning board from a half acre to one acre of change in the ordinance.
David, you got that, you got it down? Uh, that was motion, is there a second?
I'll second it because I, the difference in a half acre and an acre is twice as big, but, uh, you can place all the speed limits, sign all the speed laws you want, they, they keep people from speeding. And, uh, I've always been an advocate, I thought, I thought a half acre was too constricted, so I'll, I'll second the motion.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the.
That's the only change now, there's.
That's the only change. There's in that ordinance.
In this red writing.
In the red.
In the red.
Half acre to one acre, exactly what the state requirements are. And I think through this process, uh, we need to look at violations and, um, and like some folks in here last month recommended that we, uh, that we do a, a stop work order in the future, uh, because, look, I see it all the time. I mean, it's not construction sites that's causing our rivers to turn muddy. It's driveways with no gravel, it's ditches, it's the whole nine yards. And if our rivers are filling up with silt, they are silted in really on a half acre, just like Commissioner Young said. People are going in, filling out these applications for the permits and cheating on those. We don't have the staff to enforce, um, these things. And I really and truly don't think one from a half acre to an acre is going to create any more as long as there's an enforcement for these violators.
Is there one out there? Is there enforcement, is there a piece that enforces this? Oh, you had a motion, second discussion? All in favor of the, uh, vote, raise your hand. All opposed? Whoops, all opposed? Okay, four to one. All right, new business. Let's see, Paul, do we have something else down on eleven? No, new business, school lunches.
Good evening, I do have a handout, uh, that I would like to share with y'all.
I think your faces, we just wanted to pause for a second while the people are going outside and give you all a chance to look at the handouts.
Good evening. For those of you who do not know me, I'm David Lachlan, I'm the school nutrition director for Mackin County Schools. I've, uh, been with the county for over seven years now. And, um, I thoroughly enjoy being a part of the school system and serving students in Mackin County Schools. I'm coming to you tonight to expand on some things we heard on earlier in public comment, expanding on food insecurity in our county. And specifically relating that to how that affects the students in the county. And to make a request of y'all. I'm requesting tonight that Mackin County, um, funds up to two hundred thousand dollars to provide to all students at Franklin High and Hollins School lunch at no cost for school year two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. So a little bit of background about school nutrition in Mackin County. School nutrition operates solely off of government reimbursements, grants and food sales. Food sales, uh, we do not require any additional local funding to operate. The only, uh, funding we get locally is for capital outlay requests. Otherwise, we are self-sufficient and we have been the entire time I've been here. Not now, but our eleven schools currently receive CEP funding. That's, uh, community eligibility provision funding that allows students at those schools to eat lunch at no cost. And that covers seventy-one percent of our students in the county. To qualify under the CEP program, we pull government data which looks at the number of students at the school that qualify for different government-assisted programs such as SNAP, TANF, Work First Cash Assistance, certain Medicaid students, homeless, migrant, foster and runaway students. Be shocked to know that we have sixty, uh, last year we had sixty-two homeless and foster students in Mackin County. FHS and Hollins do not currently qualify to be a part of the CEP program. FHS has a free and reduced percentage of fifty-four point one percent. Hollins has a, a free and reduced percentage of forty-four point four percent. Those students do eat for free at those schools. But all re, all the rest of the students must pay for their meals. Last year, uh, we charged three eighty-five for most of those meals. This year it would be four dollars per lunch at those schools per student. At the end of the year, we had over eighty-one hundred dollars in unpaid meal debt between FHS and Hollins. That has grown significantly since, uh, prior to COVID. At one point, it was up close to twenty thousand dollars before the end of the school year. We were able to collect some of that, but we were not successful collecting all of that. So if you look at, um, what would cost a, a family of four to be two students in the upcoming school year at four dollars a meal, that's over thirteen hundred dollars, um, just for lunch. That doesn't include any other fees they may have for, um, extra, extracurricular activities, any other fees for holistic ourselves or breakfast or lunch, uh, any, any other required dues they may have. That is just to provide lunch for those two students. So looking, looking at all that, um, we, we do have a huge need to, to provide nutritious meals and to pro, provide equal access to meals at all schools. And I, I feel like we're missing out by not being able And I feel like we're missing out by not being able to provide FHS and Highlands students access to free meals when so many people fall through the cracks. Although the free and reduced percentages are over 50%, at FHS and over 40% at Highlands, there's still a lot of, a lot of families that are borderline that just fall outside of the range to be provided meals. There, there's a lot of families that pay for multiple students, and it is burdensome, especially since COVID and since price increases, inflation. It is very challenging for all families to to provide funding for their kids to eat these meals. We have a lot of students being raised by their grandparents, using their retirement monies to pay for kids to eat at school, using any means necessary to provide for their grandkids. So our, our objective is to ensure that every student at FHS and Highlands receives a nutritious lunch at no cost, addressing their basic needs and promoting their success both academically and personally. Solutions, of course, we're seeking funding for this year. But we will continue to do everything within our means to to look at the data every year and try to provide Highlands and high school free lunches through the CEP program. And we run that data every single school year, and it's something we look at every single school year. The benefits of being able to provide these meals are to meet the basic needs of students. Support school attendance, support student focus, support student behavior, decrease financial burden on families, and to make sure that instructional supply money stays in the classroom instead of being used to pay negative balances. Because up to this point, that is what happens when negative balance is due at the end of the year. A school has come out with instructional supply money. Used to, that was manageable because negative balances were, you know, maybe 2,000 a year countywide between 11 schools. But now we are looking at over 8,000 between two schools. With the fact that we had to raise meal prices to $4 this year, that amount of unpaid meal debt will increase, and it will be harder for families to pay back. So that's why I'm here making a request tonight. I feel that every child deserves the dignity to have their needs met. And as a county, if we have the means to bridge those gaps and to help meet those needs, then we have a responsibility to do what we can to do that. Thank you.
David, you and I've talked. This leads on to the Board of Education. I need to ask you one little bite question. Don't take it personal. Why is this out of the budget, this request?
I understand. We, we always are, like I said, monitoring this data and turning it in each year as a part of our application process with the state to operate under a national school lunch and breakfast program. That happens very late into this, it's a process that starts in April and ends, you know, we turn our applications in in June. We were hopeful that at least one of our schools would qualify for this upcoming school year. But you also have to take participation into consideration. And at this time, the participation at the high school in Highlands was just not enough to to meet that requirement for them to be CEP. So I understand it is after the budget process, but it it was data we just did not have at the time during that budget process.
What does participation mean?
So participation in breakfast and lunch program.
They bring their own to bed on?
So, and at the high school. So, for example, countywide, about 70% of the students eat a school lunch. At the high school, it's more around 40%, 45%. Breakfast is even lower. It's hard to get the older kids in there early in the morning to do breakfast. A lot of it we do at break time. So high school is one of the challenges. Why that's important is even though if you qualify for a CEP program, not 100% of your meals are reimbursed at the free rate. So the free rate of reimbursement is, it's around this coming school year, $4.69 cents per meal. The rest, the rest of the meals are qualified at the pay rate, which is 50 something cents. Talk in my head. But there's a certain, under CEP, a certain percentage of your meals qualifies under free as far as reimbursement, a certain percentage qualifies under paid. So you have an ISFP number, identifies student percentage. That is all the students at the school we identify as homeless, foster, migrant, runaway, SNAP benefit recipients, Medicaid recipients. And that's how that percentage is determined on how many of those meals are gonna qualify as either free or paid. So the more participation you have, the more reimbursement you're gonna get under that program.
Let me ask you, go ahead, Paul.
This is a recurring program. I mean, you're wanting to make this a permanent program.
I, as, as far as my request to y'all tonight?
No, I mean
So the CEP program, we pull the data, and that starts the first year, and you can run the program for four years before you have to reapply. You can choose to reapply at any year if the data is in your favor. So we're starting our second year under the CEP program with having non-schools qualifying. We could continue that for two more years after the coming year before we have to reapply. But we could also choose to reapply this upcoming spring if the data is in our favor.
I agree with Josh about, or with Gary about this is a, after the budget, this is a pretty big hit. What's your fund balance? I don't know what that is, fund balance, Jim.
Unfortunately, off the top of your head, we don't know. They, what you spoke to him about participation, I think we've been taking steps to increase that, which will in turn, still reduce the need for us to even come back and ask. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. You know, during COVID, we lost over half of our employees. At one point, we had 53 employees, and then during COVID, we dropped down to 27 employees. Most of last year, we worked a high school with four employees. And it's, with high schools, you've got to be innovative. You've got to give them more options. You've got to provide them better quality. You've got to give them options in terms of time periods of when they can eat. There's, it becomes challenging when you've, when you're working with three to four employees. We've worked on increasing our staffing. We are bringing, we're finally at the point to where food products that were unavailable to us before during COVID are starting to be back in stock. We are bringing back Seltzer for them this year. We continue to have break food where they can come in. Hopefully, in the future, we can do some kiosk or some other, other options as far as going to the students and providing the meals. But we are actively pursuing increasing participation to try to support it to where we don't need to ask for funding from y'all to provide these meals.
David, let me ask you, go ahead.
No, the reason I was asking that, I mean, I made your request, comes out of somebody's fund balance. Your budget's bigger than our budget.
Our fund balance is not nearly as big as your fund balance.
But you don't want it is.
It's little.
My word is little too, because we just spent $30 million out of it.
I mean, I think it's, it is a worthy program, absolutely.
If I can interrupt for a second.
Worth the program.
Look, lady, right now, our fund balance is probably just a shade under $2 million. And since the simple operation in one month, if I'm wrong, lady, for us to keep the doors open at our schools requires a fund balance of almost $800,000, correct? And that's just the funding to keep the doors open. So as we're facing, caused with inflation, other things, we're operating off of a fund balance to say between 1.1, 1.2 million dollars. And as things continue on, as we're seeing decreasing funding on programs, the fund balance will disappear quickly. If you remember, we've made some very, some very hard decisions. Usually COVID monies where we held that back to try to help bridge the gap for our fund balance and make sure we continue to provide the services that we need. This is a big act. We're not, I mean, we understand that, guys. I think, I'm speaking for David, but I think we understand the urgency of increasing the participation so that we are, we do become self-sufficient. That's, that's important. But we're at the stage where, and I think it's harder for high school students to admit that they need some help for that they participate.
Definitely.
But basically, what we're looking at, Gary's aware of that, that stigma, shall we say. But David's going to embark on things and try to get more and more participation. The more participation we get, that means we go up. And our whole goal is to, right now, bluntly, with the increase in prices, which is inflation's causing, there's a hardship that's gonna be coming to our families. And we're looking for this, this year to try to bridge that gap so we keep kids fed. I'm not, I'm not trying to sound melodramatic, but we have children, the only way that they eat is the fact that they can eat lunches at our schools. That's what we have for breakfast, have lunch. A lot of children go home, that's it. They may not, they may get fed, they might get a meal that night, and they may not. But we're, we're a consistent source of body nutrition for the students that we are under our care. So like I said, we're shooting, this will be the only time. I know that, I think Hillary saw, Jackson County took this same type of action in terms of doing it now that they, their commissioners, Rod Hillary?
That's right. They elected to fund meals for the entire student population of the county and not participate in the CEP program that we're participating in. I'm not sure what their data told them, but we've been very fortunate to have David and Tabitha and their team really going to bat for our kids for the last two years. We were blessed with free lunches during the first two years of the pandemic. And unfortunately, when those went away, the lunch rates came back almost 55% more than they were before. It was over, it was about $3.50. I think my kids were paying about $2.85 pre-pandemic. So it's not just this discrepancy of the two schools, but it's also the increase in the dollar amounts for the, for the meals. And we have teams on site, such as Mr. King and his team at Franklin High School. They're working on a task force to try to ramp up the numbers, as they mentioned. We're automating forms so that parents can fill them out online as opposed to in triplicate for every single kid, every single time. We think that's going to help the, the numbers that we need to kind of boost us. Our trajectory is great, which is why we do feel like this is a one-time ask. And to speak to what Chairman Reedlove was mentioning, it is a huge hit on our fund balance for we to pull it from that. But with the timeliness of the need with schools starting in two weeks, about 13 days, we felt like it was appropriate after watching what some of the other counties around us and across the state have sought for their, for their commissioners to bridge the gap for this school year.
So I can honestly say, from this perspective, I can see the need for this to be presented at budget time, okay? But at the same time, on the other side of this, I work with a lot of families in this community where kids are going home hungry. And it's not a fun thing. And at this point, to me, doesn't, it doesn't really matter to me what we have to do to try to get these kids fed. When they gotta go home on the weekend and there's nothing to eat in the house, you know, it's not, it's not fun to see their little faces on a Monday morning, you know, during the summertime or in Monday afternoon during the school year and knowing that these babies don't have anything to eat. It's not good. So if there's a way that we can do that, I want to be in support of that. So for what you're proposing right now, Mr. Lightner, I'm definitely in support of that, okay?
And we feel so much for even acknowledging this request out of budget. Like David said, we didn't have the data in front of us, and we were very hopeful that we thought we were gonna get it this year. We were really close. And unfortunately, that just, that just didn't come to fruition. And I think we were just trying to really think of what we could do as an immediate action at our meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we do appreciate you entertaining the request and certainly understand that it's not ideal outside of the budget.
So Lori, is this something that would have to come out of fund balance?
Yeah, your contingency has about 375,000, 367,850. So of course, that would be a huge hit to that.
That's for the year.
Yeah. So that's, you know, half your contingency for the year. So I think fund balance will be okay. And I'm just curious if I can ask you, you all, so if the Board of Commissioners approves the 200,000, will you bill the county monthly for the number of free meals provided, or how would that work?
I'll, I think I will, would be speaking with some, some county around me or familiar directors where they have the unapproval to go through this process and see how they're planning on handling that there and come back with y'all some advice.
Mr. Chairman, what?
I, I, I think a monthly amount would be good. I'm, I'm not trying to, to ask for more than, than we need. Just what is necessary.
Let me say an observation as a former principal there. You have eligible families who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. Out of pride, that child's not gonna get it. They're not gonna get that application. Now that, if you watch, it's obvious, you go to the lunchroom during the times when they're eating, trying to hustle a quarter, 50 cents, eat off of somebody else's plate. They are hungry, as Mr. Antoine said. But that family is not gonna break down their pride piece and say, hey, and, and the result of this, what I observed, you can be standing there as a principal, and you'll see a student look at the cookies, and they'll ask you for 50 cents. And you don't want to be a smart addict, well, where's your money? Okay, you give them that. The same situation happens when they go through the line. They don't control the family money. And to ask for credit, that is a very defeating thing that you have to do when you're going through the line with your friends, that you have to ask that person. Like, can you put the, can on a tab or whatever they call it now? And I just heard you say that we had a credit this year. Was it 16,000 or eight at each one?
Are you talking about what was unpaid at the end of the year? So by the end of the year, it was still $8,162, most of it being at the high school.
And to my common sense, if I'm on free and reduced, I'm not asking for credit. That money is being asked by students whose parents, now, I think I understand this correctly. You can, you can apply for free or reduced at the beginning of the year. Six weeks later, you're, 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 you're gone. I mean, you, you don't have that, they lost their job or somewhere like that. Now, I know you can do the free thing or reduced thing, but the families will not do it.
So
So, but the credit is your savior for the students who can do it or families can do it. or families can do it, but there's, there's a piece in there, we're not going, we're not beggars. And you can hear them talking about that. But they're, but they're trying to survive off the credit thing, knowing at the end of the year, you got eight, sixteen thousand dollars, that you've got a credit thing. What punitive thing do you want to do? I heard this year, and I see it down here now. Instructional supply money stays in classroom instead of being used to pay negative balances. Those negative balances, in my understanding, they were made by students who were eligible, but I've got a feeling, out of pride, the parents said, we're not, we're not going through the free system, we're not going to go through reduced, right or wrong?
Correct, I believe that's a lot of it. So all of the negative balances are for students that actually received a reimbursable meal, but for some reason could not pay for it.
Right. And so, John, I'll turn it over to you. And my feeling is, during pandemic, you did a wonderful job. Like, the children, the young people were fed. And at least they had a meal every day. Now the school's starting back, or will be starting back, or starting, they get at least two meals a day. And those meals are quality meals. They're not just not going through that grab, no cookie or something, they're quality meals. And again, these are our taxpayers. So I'm, I'm all for it, because it's for the best interest of the child. And really, it's for the best interest of the family, because they don't have the money to spend on the children, children for extra food, or something like that. That was my observation. But I figured that the kids that were struggling, for whatever reason, they're part of your sixteen thousand, or your eight thousand, eight thousand, good kids. And that's, that's just my observation. I appreciate what you're doing, and what you're trying to do for the schools. Thank you for what you've done for the nine schools you got here. We've got two schools here, the kids are, we need to take a quick look, thank you.
Chairman Shields, I'll summarize, and then, I'm in front of Cheryl, I apologize. We're here in front of you, we know this is a big ask, and we will commit to you as we move forward, doing everything in our power. We think we have some plans put in place to try to raise the participation, which means that sometime during your future, these two schools will qualify, where we would no longer have to have needs and coming back. That's all we can commit to at this point, I'm going to do this. And again, I'm sorry it wasn't on budget, as David said. We didn't, we simply didn't have the figures to be able to do that at that point in time. So we apologize for that, and we appreciate your listening. So, Mr. Cheryl, I'm sorry.
Well, you're fine, carry on.
I'm done, I'm done.
The last thing I'll say is, we did reach out to organizations to potentially do a grant to cover this, and unfortunately, it wasn't in the scope of, of the work of certain foundations. We did this last year, and also this year. So we, we're really trying, trying our best to, to, to do this without coming here and asking it of you, but certainly appreciative of your entertaining the request.
Mr. Lawrence.
Well, a lot of things here that I questioned, but, you know, we toss the word free around like it's nothing. But nothing is free. It is costing someone, some way. What if the food bank came in here and said, we need two hundred thousand dollars to buy food boxes to supply food for all of these families that don't have dinner on their table tonight? That don't have kids in the school system, that don't have all these things? You know, I was very poor growing up, okay? But I never went hungry, because we weren't too proud to ask for free lunches. But you know, I saw, when I read this in the newspaper, and correct me if I'm wrong, based on what Mr. Shields was talking about with free and reduced lunches, and the cost of lunches. I believe the paper quoted that if we can get this passed, we don't have to go through the process of the paperwork. Is that what the paper said? So.
Reduced and free, you don't have to get involved in that, right? The paperwork of reduced and free.
So if we depend on an agency to provide the funding for this, my staff don't have to bother with the paperwork. And that just caught me the wrong way. It was like, we want more money, we want raises, we want this, we want this, but we want to do more work? Wait a minute. Why don't your staff want to do the paperwork to get these free meals? You know, I raised three boys in Highland School, and Hillary, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. If you go to Highland School and you don't have lunch money that day, they will feed you a bad lunch. Is that still happening?
We don't turn children away at the register and make them take their tray back. I think what you're referring to is that we don't lose kids by having parents fill out paperwork for free and reduced lunch, and then not having families who need it not submit the forms and then not get it. So it's not, this request certainly isn't so that we can avoid processing paperwork for two schools. It's to keep kids from falling through the cracks, because their parents don't file the paperwork. Paperwork isn't needed if every child can walk into the school, just like they do at nine of our schools, and walked through the lunch line, just like every single one of their peers, in the exact same situation. They're all on the same playing field.
Right, okay. So, one thing that caught me, caught my attention here. Decrease financial burden on families. How are you decreasing the burden on a family when they don't have kids, and they can't afford to buy groceries and medicine? Isn't that passing that burden on to that family? Because I don't think we're on a level playground here. Because there are many seniors in this county that cannot afford to buy food and their medicine. They're on fixed income. And so what if that group came in and asks us for two hundred thousand dollars to feed them dinner tonight? I get it. I don't want a child to go hungry, as well as anybody in this room. But we got two boards here. My job is to run this county. Your job is to run the school system. We just spent thirty million dollars of county taxpayers' money, plus. And you're asking us for another two hundred thousand dollars? I think we need to go through the process of the paperwork.
So if, if you don't mind, I would like to clarify a couple things about paperwork. So, as a CP school, if you qualify for a CP program, students do not have to fill out free and reduced applications. All students just automatically receive a meal at that school for free. We are asking for funding for Franklin High School and Highland School. Not, not so that they don't have to do paperwork. They, we, it is very important that we get free and reduced forms turned back into us, because the more students we can get approved for these, this funding is to cover students in a paid status. So the more students we can qualify as free or reduced, that means the lower number of paid students there are going to be. And the only way to qualify them for free or reduced meals is for them to be directly certified through the state system, or for, for them to fill out a free and reduced application. So it is, it is not a way to get out of doing any paid work.
But if, in my mind, in finances, if your family does not qualify for state funding, it seems to me like you're well enough financially where you can pay for your child's lunch. I mean, I pay for my kids. I didn't have the money, but I paid for my kids' lunch, they didn't go hungry. And so, and I've paid for several other students' meals and stuff at school. But this is an emotional ask, in my mind, because everybody in this room loves children, and they don't want to see them go hungry. But I can't, I cannot vote based on emotions. And I believe that the Macon County School System's budget is much greater than Macon County as a whole. And surely to God, y'all can find two hundred thousand dollars floating around to provide Franklin High School and Highland School students. If you want to provide them all free lunches, I believe y'all can find that money in there. But I'm very concerned on our finances and what this county needs moving forward. So I, I, I don't mean that in, in a disrespectful way, nor a harsh way. But somewhere along the line, we've got to face reality. This board does not have unlimited funds to take care of this county.
If we could, I think Deidre, Mr. Cheryl had something to respond about one of your comments. Deidre, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify really quick, because it's super important to me that we protect the fact that our board, Macon County Schools as a whole, does work really hard, and we do not cut corners when it comes to trying to fill in any gaps that we can independently. So I can understand if your concern was, when you read in the paper it appeared that we were trying to get out of work, that would cost you money, because that would be unfair of us to ask. But if you're referring, when you said, the paper said that, if you're talking about the Franklin Press from last week, it said, when Mr. Lightner was talking, Jackson County's funding took out the application component. So taking out the paperwork, as it was mentioned in this article, was referring to Jackson County, not Macon County. And as they have assured you, we are continuing to put on all that effort to make sure that we're doing everything on our end to cover the gap, so that it doesn't fall on you.
Was that the entire article? Because I don't remember reading that about Jackson County, so. I remember the application process. If we, if we get this funding, then we will not have to go through the application process of reduced and free meals. It's.
Are you thinking about the funding, that we don't have to apply for four more years? Because once the funding, say for instance, next year Franklin High School and Highland School qualify, that's good for four years. So maybe that's what you were referring to in the article, we don't have to refile paperwork every year. We, once it's approved, like for the nine schools, we have this year and two more school years, so we don't have to refile that paperwork, perhaps that's what you're referring to.
Do you have a question? David, in your monies that you mentioned, did you say two hundred thousand, or up to two hundred thousand?
Up to two hundred thousand.
Okay. I'm trying to develop a motion, for me. And use the word up to two hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand.
Those, so we come up with that estimate, looking at our free and reduced percentages at those schools for last year, how many lunches they ate at those schools last year by category, and trying to make an estimation of how many we'll eat this coming school year. So at all our other schools, when we, they went to CP status, they, their participation in lunch went up twenty-five, thirty-five percent. But then you also have families that they may decide not to, to fill out an application if they know that they're going to eat for free anyway, so that's. So we do our best to come up with an estimate based upon that of how much we might need, and I estimate two hundred, two hundred thousand.
And you and I talked about this the other day a little bit. I just didn't, Lori, how do I make a motion with the word up to?
We would just make the motion, two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
From general fund balance, and we'll, we'll have to work with Lainey and, you know, David, and try to figure out how they're going to, would bill us for the meals, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we, let me see, it's regarding school lunches, Franklin High School and Highland School, two hundred thousand dollars be taken from the general fund balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Been a second by Mr. Antoine, further discussion.
Worth a program, I'm sure, free food, free whatever, but there's a budget process and a funding protocol that you've got to follow. If you're running a business, we're running a business, y'all are running a business. And based on that, I don't, I can't support a two hundred thousand dollar out-of-budget appropriation.
Real quick, it's hard. And I will agree, John, I appreciate your burden, and it is emotional. Sitting here thinking about fairness, and not that it's any of our decisions, but we feel, we, we feed the jails, but we feed the seniors. At the cost to them, we deliver meals, and I mean, there's nine other schools. I don't like it either. I guess my recommendation would be to please try to pursue filling out more applications throughout the year. And I, one of the problems I see is, a lot of those kids at the high school come in late. They have late arrivals, so they probably already ate breakfast, or they don't, just wait till lunch. I mean, they can, I don't know, I don't know how to fix that problem, but I get it. It's, it's, it's a tough one, and I mean, I'm with you, I feel like nine schools have it.
Mr. Shields can offer a little bit of a compromise, because I understand y'all's concern. I was just talking with David. Again, this two hundred thousand dollars is just our best estimate at this point in time. We have no way of knowing for sure. But if we have a motion, and we, and we put that as a cap, we'd also be more than willing for us to give you, Lori, if you had upped that amount, give her what we call a monthly accounting, showing where we're coming up with our figures, in terms of how we calculate that, and if we have it set up up to two hundred thousand dollars, subject to a submission of accounting to Lori, to be reversed for that month, then that would be more than acceptable. If what it says makes any sense.
Lori, you feel all right with that, David? All right.
And then to answer the final question, Mr. Young, I think, we're going to do everything in our power to make our system sustainable. We understand, I'm not, as Mr. Cheryl said, this is an emotional thing, and he made a comment, but that's our, our goal is, we have to focus on the children. If it's emotional, then it's emotional, I don't know how else to put it. We feel very strongly about it. So, apologize to put you in a bad spot, a little bit, not the whole way. Just a little bit, because, because what, what the big goal is all about, so I'm sorry. It's been a long night, so.
A whole question, Mr. Chairman.
If, if we can make it that way, then that, that would be perfectly adequate for, for us.
We had a motion, and we had a second, we've had discussion. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Did it leave something?
Did Mr. Biggs change your motion?
No.
No, it's just a, a way to account the funds.
Yes.
Everything's the same, account it.
My bad, my bad.
Okay.
Will we, give it over again, please?
Okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your hand, right hand, okay? Can you see all that, okay?
Hi, gentlemen, thank you. We're sorry, we're sorry, we're sorry, it's been a long night for y'all. On the bottom of our hearts and to children, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Taking instructional monies over.
I need you to come back here a month, I'm floating a pile of wheels grease. All right, eleven B, thank you, Health Department fees from the consent agenda. I make a motion that we pull out. Y'all, for me, would y'all review that, it's been approved by the Health Board. All those fee increases have.
Pull out those fees, I mean, I got them the other day. I haven't had a chance to go through all the, the fee schedule, but there are several of them that has yawned up significantly.
Well, I was just going to recommend we pull out the environmental health fee proposal till next month, because I want to submit, we've hashed this out for twelve years. And before I leave, I want to see some changes made in that fee structure, just on environmental health. The rest of it, I don't really know anything about or care much about. But that's your call. But that's your call.
Did you make that as a motion?
Pardon?
Did you make that as a motion?
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate now or we can pull it out of consent agen.
We pulled it out of consent agenda.
Okay.
It went to new business 11B. And my, um, reasoning for removing it from the consent agenda, I would like to, um, table that until next month to get a better understanding of these fee schedules as a whole.
Are these proposed fees, when would they be taking effect?
Um, as soon as you put your vote on them.
Pardon?
So we'll go by our past fees until you vote to change them.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we table those, um, the fee schedule for the Macon County Public Health billing guide until, uh, September.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion second discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five oh.
Pistol.
So, the declaration of service weapon as surplus property.
Oh, yeah.
So the sheriff has requested permission to award Captain Timothy Holland his duty weapon upon his official retirement from the sheriff's department on August the 31st. This is a standard procedure that's allowed in general statute. We've done this many times. Um, we, um, declare the weapon as surplus property and then we sell it to, uh, Mr. Holland at his retirement for a dollar.
And at his retirement?
At his retirement, which is on August the 31st, the sheriff will, uh, present that weapon.
Yep.
One request on my side.
Motion approved.
And second.
Mr. Antoine is the law enforcement liaison. I ask for him to be a participant in that, of the, of the ceremony.
I'll let him award it if he wants, if he wants to. I'll, I'll, I'll assume you'll see the details.
I'll be on it. If he don't want it for a dollar, can I have it?
But that was something on that too. Mr. Antoine, he is the liaison of law enforcement. If he'd be involved in that.
Let's vote on it.
Yep. Motion second.
We've had a motion, second discussion, now let's vote. Now, you'll have to help me on what we're voting on. I just know I put him in.
No, we're just voting on stated motion.
Okay.
The surplus is given.
Yes, but we're not leaving out Mr. Antoine though. He's, he's.
Yeah, he's in. He's in.
He's in.
He's in.
Oh, does he want to make the motion?
Well, he's a liaison motion.
We already made the motion. Do we just vote? Five oh.
Let's go.
Five oh.
Five oh. All right. Let's see. Got any more we're adding here?
Yep. He's in, yeah.
Uh, appointments, I'm down, uh, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
And we took out the C.
Right.
Okay. Uh, or table it, yeah. All right, now we're down to appointments.
We got a motion, second, consent agenda.
Standing motion.
All right, uh, vote to approve the consent agenda, raise your right hand.
Do you recycle it?
No.
That is all my heart.
It seems to have entered it now.
Right now.
My understanding that you have a closed session for consular attorney, real property and personnel. So that's my three, 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 18.11, eight, three, eight, five, and eight, two. Don't know if we have, we'll be taking any action when we come out.
Yeah.
Do you make a motion?
I make a motion, we're going to closed session.
Same.
All in favor?
Paul, you in favor? Yeah.
There you go.
Second.
Second. All in agreement? No, please talk.
All was in favor.
All in, all in favor? Yay, 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 yay.